Good evening, Altadena's. This is your Altadena Town Council. We are getting ready to start for our first town council meeting in the year 2018. Happy New Year to all of you. And I would like to call the meeting of the Altadena Town Council for January 16, 2018 to order. The time is 7:08. For the Pledge of Allegiance tonight, I will turn it over to Councilmember Matthews to introduce those that will be leading us in tonight's Pledge of Allegiance. Councilmember Matthews?
Thank you Chair. Happy New Year, community. This evening Sam Yarborough and Annette Spence, representatives of the Community Women with Vital Voices, will have the honor of leading the Pledge of Allegiance. Community Women with Vital Voices is founded by Lena Kennedy, is a nonprofit whose mission is to empower women and the community leaders through educational conferences, workshops, public services, and charitable services. The organization is known for producing one of the largest women's health conference in Southern California, Southern California Women's Health, Beauty, and Empowerment Conference, which is held every year and is free to everyone who attends. The conference hosts over 2,000 women and features a man cave for more than 150 men attending. Ladies, please come forward to lead us in the pledge.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Would you stand, face the flag, put your right hand over your heart, and we will say together the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated.
Thank you so much. We appreciate you taking the time out of your busy schedule to come and lead the Pledge of Allegiance, the first one for the town council in the year 2018. And moving along, we would like to proceed with the roll call, and that will be Councilmember Matthews once again.
Council, when your name is called, please acknowledge your presence. Nestor Delatorre.
Present.
Okori Zimi.
Present.
Veronica Jones.
Present.
Victoria Knapp.
Present.
Jennifer Lee.
Here.
Billy Malone.
Present.
Diane Markison.
Here.
Judy Matthews, present. Justin Robertson.
Here.
Gloria Sangueca.
Here.
Patricia Sutherland.
Here.
Dr. Sandra Thomas.
Present.
Sylvia Vega.
Present.
John White.
Present.
Dr. Reginald Wilkins.
Excuse the absence.
Dorothy Wong.
Here.
We have a quorum of 15 and one excused absence.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Matthews. And moving on to the Councilmember Pat Sutherland for the January 2018 meeting agenda.
Thank you. Councilmembers, you have copies of the agenda that was sent out to you. There are also copies, hopefully still copies, on the piano for the community. There are two additions to the agenda since we posted it. That would be under item six, it would be 6.3, a report from the Community Relations Committee, Dr. Sandra Thomas, and under eight census tracts, 8.1 census tract 4610. Are there any other changes or corrections from what you have? In that case, I move that we accept the agenda as amended.
Okay. Councilmembers, you have heard the motion to accept the agenda for tonight and is properly seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposing? Any abstention? Okay, unanimous? Okay, we're moving on to the chairman's remarks, and that will be myself. I had something prepared for tonight. It will be a little bit long, but I'll try to get through it as quickly as possible. First of all, once again, to my fellow council members and to the community, thank you for your attendance, and for those of you that watch on television, we thank you as well. Everyone knows that this meeting is recorded and televised on cable. I'm not sure the channel, but we get that to you before the end of the evening. You do not have to wait until the minutes are posted on the Altadena Town Council website to get this information. You can watch it before it is posted on the town council website. Together, we are building on progressive ideas and community engagement. Altadena, we ask you to join and support your town council as we build a better Altadena together. Active community engagement inevitably will lead to progressive ideas and a better community. Tonight, Altidinas, it is really my vision, which is also shared with the executive committee, that our upcoming election in June, that we really get the turnout to show that we have the mandate of Altidinas. So, tonight, I am pleased to be announcing the chair to the election committee and a vice chair. We will do things a little bit differently. I've also consulted with the person that is being appointed tonight to lead the upcoming election, that with the vision of getting the community participation, that we will have to enlist individuals from the different census tract to be able to assist us to achieve a very good turnout. So, tonight, I'm pleased to appoint Councilmember Dr. Thomas as the chair of the election committee. And I'm also delighted to appoint Councilmember Knapp as the vice chair to the election committee. At the executive council meeting, these were the two individuals. So, rather than drop one and take the other one, we see it as getting both of them together to really effect what the overall objectives are. Some of the individuals to be named to the election committee will be left up to the chair. Of course, I'm sure that Dr. Thomas will consult with the vice chair so that they can effectively get the type of turnout that we want to see for Altadena. And officially, Dr. Thomas, you are certain to be the chair.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I would also like to use this opportunity to thank certain individuals and acknowledge certain groups that supported the town council in our second holiday party. And that will be, I'd like to, the holiday committee, you guys did fabulous job. So, I'd like the council, as well as the community, to give them a round of applause. That will be the six of them, let me try to get it straight here. It will be Councilmember Knapp, it will be Councilmember Jones, it will be Councilmember Thomas, it will be Councilmember, who else? I know Matthews, and Councilmember Wong, and Councilmember Sutherland. So, let's give them a round of applause. And again, thank you so much for going way above and beyond what we had expected. I'd like to acknowledge St. Mark's Episcopal School and Pasadena Rosebud. We have sent an acknowledgement and a thank you letter, letters to them, so we just want to let them know on camera that we appreciated their support. And for the business organizations within that supported, we have several of them, we have Pasadena Media, of course, that covers these meetings, and also Baja, Cali, Fish and Taco, Bloomsfeld Creamery, Buy Nothing Altadena, Alt Passa Green Circle, and of course, we had a resident that was very kind to also bring something to the community, not just to the council, and that's Mr. and Mrs. Hubbard. So, and most importantly, I would like to recognize the community because you came, it was standing room, and that shows support, that you definitely support your council member, your council, and what we are doing here. Moving on to another topic, I know that a lot of people here are here to speak on the police brutality, and that will be coming forward, not at this point, but I just wanted to make a statement on that. The Altadena Town Council is against any form of police brutality and/or the use of excessive force on citizens. Having said that, the unfortunate incident involving a resident of Altadena and the Pasadena police is regrettable. I know that Altidinas will continue to express their dissatisfaction with the recent incidents. I know some are calling for public forum for law enforcement to address the community. I would defer to the captain, Captain Stocky, and on any further comments, since this has come up, I know that within the council, we have someone that is a Community Relations Commissioner for the Los Angeles County Fifth District. So, something like this is something that I felt strongly that we should defer to this individual who has a wealth of experience. So, and that person happens to be the Community Relations Committee Chair, and that is Dr. Sandra Thomas. So, we asked her to look further into this. I know that she will be reporting on this, but I just wanted to touch a little bit on it and to let the community know that your town council stands for what is right for our citizen, and we do not, we will not tolerate nor approve any form of brutality on our citizens. As a matter of fact, any citizen worldwide, that is not something that the town council will look the other way and allow to continue to happen. There will be, there will be some form of resolution to that. Okay, so, I'll just move on. I got a couple more things to bring up to your attention. One is the Get Healthy Altadena 2018. Your town council is doing a lot, a lot. We put hours and hours, get phone calls, and with the Get Healthy Altadena, it is on the agenda, so I will just skip that, and when the time comes, we have somebody who will give a little bit more detail on that. New York Drive Project. As you may already know, that the county public works is working on the design plan for the New York Drive Project between Lake and Altadena Drive. The project's scope consists of the extension of a storm drain from Lake to Medin Lane, the construction of the missing segment of the sidewalk, which will result in a continuous path from Altadena Avenue, Altadena Drive to Lake Avenue, upgrading the existing traffic signals, and the complete reconstruction of the roadway pavement. We recently, this is the information that I got from the Public Works, and stated that they recently completed 60 percent plans and is on schedule to start construction early in 2019. Mr. James Yang from the Los Angeles County Department of Public Works have been invited to make a special presentation to update the community on this project and the progress and to obtain the community feedback. This will take place on Tuesday, February 20, 2018. That will be the next Altadena Town Council's meeting that is televised. So, we hope to see you if you have any questions, if you have any comments, feedback that you send back to the County Department of Public Works regarding the New York Drive Project. On our website, I'd like to really thank Councilmember Delatorre for continuing to work on that, have a workaround so that you'll be able, the community is still able to get information, like the agenda and all the other pertinent information that we would like to share with the community. The Education Committee Chair is here. I'm sure she will talk a little bit more about that, but there are a couple events. One is scheduled for January 21st, and the other one is scheduled for January 30th, which will be a second town hall for the Altadena Town Council Education Committee. So, I'm sure she will talk a little bit more about that. Your town council, I know when we celebrated the Veterans Day, your town council was really interested in honoring veterans, as well as trying to honor some special individuals. Well, look no farther. Tomorrow being January 17, 2018, we have a WWII veteran who turns Centennial. He will be celebrating 100 years tomorrow, and the town council will be asked to be, you know, to show up to support, so we will be there. The person is actually in Councilmember Sutherland and Councilmember Robertson's census tract. He lives at Monticello, and his name is Carl Ditzel. I think I pronounced that correctly. He turns 100 years young tomorrow. So, I think I'm almost there. Marijuana dispensary, so we're just going to leave that alone and let the law enforcement talk a little bit more about that if they can. Community standard district, this is something that we worked on for many, many years. That went into effect January 11, 2018, so there was a website to get, to go, get to, to be able to get that information. So, I think I've taken enough of the time, but these are very important information that your town council has been involved in, and, you know, you do have the information now. So, moving along, I don't think I'm forgetting anything. I know Dr. Thomas didn't ask me to say this. I'm actually surprised that Dr. Thomas is here. My understanding, and please correct me, I don't know if anybody else knows, Dr. Thomas is dead passed, I think it was, was it?
Last night.
And last night, and she is here. So, I'd like to take the chair's privilege to, and she did not tell, I mean, I just knew about it, but I think right is right. So, I would like the community and the council to take a moment of silence to respect the loss in honor of Dr. Thomas's dad. Thank you so much. That concludes the chair's remarks, and our prayers and thoughts are with you, Dr. Thomas.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Okay. Vice Chair's report.
I think I can be pretty brief. I need to say that on January the 9th, the executive committee met, and we set the agenda for tonight's meeting. Comment cards are on the piano. I'm going to guess that most of you who have something that you wanted to comment on during public comment tonight have already given us cards. If you have not, it will be roughly in the middle of the meeting, general public comment. So, if you need to complete a card, we would appreciate it, and just bring it and hand it into one end of the council table. I'd like to thank very much tonight that lovely lady sitting in the back there with all the cupcakes is Helen Liddell, and she has presented us in honor of Martin Luther King's birthday. She's got cupcakes for everybody, so I hope, I hope that you have, will have or already have participated. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And that's all of my report.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Sutherland and the able vice chair. Recording secretary's report, that will be Councilmember Matthews.
Council, you were provided the proposed Altadena Town Council meeting minutes of December 19, 2017, with a response date of Monday, January 15, 2018. Under item 3.2, I notice and remove the hypothesis after the word Webster. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing no other corrections or additions, I move that the proposed meeting minutes of December 19, 2017 are accepted as amended.
Thank you, Councilmember Matthews. You have heard the motion properly seconded to accept the minutes of December 19, 2017. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Any abstention? Okay, unanimous once again. And moving on to the treasurer's report, and that will be Councilmember White.
Yes, good evening. The account, as usual, is in good standing. We have a balance of $2,380. Now, we are funded by contributions from members of the community. We are facing some expenses this coming year having to do with our website, so please consider contributing if you can. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much, Councilmember White. Correspondent secretary's report, Councilmember Delatorre.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First, on the correspondence front, we got, so it turns out Learning Works, which is, I guess, some type of education, didn't really explain, but they actually addressed it to the wrong council members. I suppose they have an incorrect mailing address. The only council member that they did have correct was Reggie, because he used to be in the town council a couple years ago. So, I took him out of the respective, the previous council members, and I tried, there wasn't enough 16, so I tried to put one per census tract. It looks like purple. So, at least one person per census tract should have it, so if you would like to see it, there it is. And the Altidina Chamber of Commerce has invited us to their 94th Annual Awards Dinner, which I'm sure Councilmember Malone will go into in his report about the, I mean, about the Chamber of Commerce. Lastly, I received an email, hopefully you guys did too, because I couldn't see who it was forwarded to, but it was from the NASA JPL Groundwater Cleanup. It's like a 2017 year in review, so there's that. So, there's a lot of information on there about that project, so if you would like, or if you did not receive, please send me an email and I could forward that to you. On the website front, it looks like I've done pretty much all I could do with the optimization, which I've been hearing comments, and I'm glad you guys like it, but it seems that I've done a lot there, and it's now on to the second phase, which is the actual rebuilding of the entire website with a new theme and new gizmos and gadgets, which, so I sent an email out to all my fellow town council members, and I'm now extending the invitation out to you guys and anybody in the community who would like to join. It's an informal committee just to help update the website. No experience in computers or programming necessary, it's just what would you like to be seen in the, in the new website? If you do not want to be formally part of the committee, you could just send me an email. My name is Nestor Delatorre, my email's on the website. Just send me, hey, I think this would be cool, and we'll bring it up with the committee and see where, if it fits into the new website or where we can put it, stuff like that. Mainly, it's making design changes, so if you have something like that, or just you want to, you know how a website should look, go ahead, please send me an email if you'd like to join. Commitment, Councilmember Robertson sent me an email about what the actual commitment would be. Mainly, I would say maybe meet about once a month, maybe a little bit less, but it'll be mainly communicating through email about drafts of, hey, what is this website? Like, what about this theme? What about this theme? Move stuff around, stuff like that. So, not much of a commitment, if you're interested. And finally, I would like to announce that I would hope to be done with everything before the start of the summer, so May, June, with the hope that I would do a special presentation when the time comes, first to the executive committee, and then to the full town council, and that way it could be broadcast for the record and be posted to the website. That way, it's not just changed suddenly, like, so you guys aren't just taken, like, by surprise. But, that's it, Mr. Chair.
Thank you so much. I'm so proud of what you are doing, and I was on that website, and it was very friendly today, so I was able to pull all the information I needed. So, keep up the good work.
Okay, so I have to admit that I made a small mistake, so I need to correct myself. The refreshments, that lovely lady is still sitting back there, and it's her first time at a council meeting, so we're very happy to have you here for the council meeting. And the cupcakes were actually provided by Councilmember Matthews and Councilmember Knapp. So, thank you. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to the public safety report. Well, I actually have the person coming in, and that will, was it Officer Davidson?
Patton. Officer Patton, Officer Yoas is on vacation.
Let me do it right. From CHP, in place of Officer Mike, it will be Officer Paul.
Yes, sir.
And thank you so much.
Thank you. So, I'll be brief here. We have some minor statistics here for December crashes. Injury crashes, there's only 11. Property damage only was 15, and luckily, we had no fatal incidents. I was unable to obtain the arrests or citation report. And further with the events for our station, we'd like to report that the Chips for Kids was another success. We're always very grateful for that, and the Altadena area does a fantastic job in providing toys for the kids during the season and their time of need, so we'd like to appreciate and say thank you very much for that. And that's all I've got. Thanks.
Councilmembers, any question for Officer Paul? Okay, Councilmember Delatorre.
Did you say how many citations you had issued?
I didn't. I was unable to obtain that report for tonight.
Oh, okay, got it. No problem.
But I'll let Mike know to bring December's and January stats next time.
Any further questions from council? Thank you so much, and we appreciate you filling in for Officer Mike.
Thank you very much.
All right. Altadena Sherry Station Lieutenant Octave and Lieutenant Clay.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the council. It's like to start by saying Happy New Year, and as always, a pleasure to be here. Lieutenant Mike Octave assigned to Altadena Station under the direction of Captain Vicki Lieutenant Mike Octave assigned to Altadena Station under the direction of Captain Vicki Stuckey, also here representing the Sheriff Department, is Commander Jeffrey Scroggen from East Patrol Division, and Lieutenant Yolanda Clay, also assigned to Altadena Station. My report will be brief, but however, a little longer than some previous reports. We have had, this is the report, which ranges from November 2017 to December 2017. We have had an increase in overall crime, and this is from 48 to 52, to 62 overall incidents. Now, these incidents are, this increase is really based upon the increase in overall larcenies. There's no trends or patterns, there's no crews or anything coming in perpetrating these crimes. These larcenies are mainly related to thefts from unlocked vehicles and package thefts. We are aware of this increase, and we're conducting briefings along with tabletop discussions, and we are investigating the matter, going to be ongoing investigations. So those larcenies did increase from 19 to 22. We also had a slight increase in our GTA's, otherwise known as our Grand Theft Autos, from four to 10, and our residential burglaries have increased from eight to 13. With those residential burglaries, again, there are no trends or patterns, however, we did notice that some of the common methods of entry are the sliding glass patio doors, and entry is typically gained by shattering those doors, so we encourage individuals, especially if you have an alarm, to get sensors on those doors, and that can act as a deterrent in addition to alerting law enforcement of the presence of a perpetrator. I'm pleased to say we had zero robberies this month, so that's down from one to zero. We also had a decrease in, now that's robbery weapons, we had a decrease in strong-arm robberies, and that's also from zero to one. We had a decrease in aggravated assaults, and that's down from four to three. Domestic violence incidents, they remain the same at zero. As previously mentioned, our residential burglaries did increase slightly from eight to 13. Our burglary other structures remain the same at four. Our vehicle burglaries also increased from four to six, so I continue to encourage our residents to continue to remove your valuables from cars, and please don't have them in plain view, and set your alarm. We also had one arson this month, and that was a vehicle-related arson. That's being handled by our arson investigators, Investigations Unit, and that investigation is ongoing. Are there any questions?
Thank you. Any questions from council first? Okay, we hope that you all don't go anywhere yet, because we're going to get into the other matter, and we appreciate you so much.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. County Fire, that would be Maria Kraken. Oh, who is she? Yeah, okay.
Good evening.
Good evening, and Happy New Year to you.
Happy New Year. For the month of December, there were a total of 387 responses in Altadena. 315 of those were for medical calls, and of those 315 patients, 236 were transported. The breakdown of the complaints is on the chart there for you. We did have 11 fires, kind of a high month. Two of them were vehicle fires, a couple of trash fires, a cooking fire. One was a chimney fire, and it is that time of year, it's getting cold, and people start using their fireplaces, and we do recommend that you do have your chimneys looked at and swept at least once a year, usually before you start to use it. We had a few structure fires, all very minor. One was on Alameda Street, in the decking with extension into the wall, and the cause for that was undetermined. On Lake Avenue on the 17th, in an apartment building, it did not affect any of the apartment units, it affected a stairwell and into a storage unit for the building, and it was possibly an improperly discarded cigarette that had fallen between the stairs and the wall of the storage unit. We had another fire on Country Club Drive, which was accidental. The tenant, or the residents, thought that their heater had been turned off, and they keep, they have a floor heater with a metal grate in the floor, and they put a rubber mat over that so that they don't burn their feet when they're walking on, in the hallway, and they accidentally had left the heater on. They thought that the heater was off, so the buildup of heat started to melt the rubber, and that took care of that. And then on the 21st, on Sacramento Street, there was an outside fire from arcing distribution lines, they fell into the shrubbery, which ignited the fence and then extended into the detached garage just a little bit. We had a few power lines down and arcing wires, and those are also listed for you. And then the 14 traffic collisions that we had, the locations are listed, and the way that we list them here is the first street listed, these did not happen at intersections, necessarily. The streets are listed, the first street is the street that the collision occurred on, and the second street listed is the closest cross street, so it gives you a better idea of where it occurred. And that is, are there any questions?
Okay, councilmembers, I'll take it one at a time, so, okay, Councilmember Wong.
Yes, the three pedestrian collisions, do you know which, would we be able to figure, get that record?
You know, as I was doing this, I thought, one of these months, somebody is going to ask which ones are the pedestrians and which ones are into the structure, so I will do that. I'll put it in parentheses next to it. If it involves a person trapped into a structure or versus pedestrian, so.
Okay, thank you.
Look for that in the future.
Okay, council.
Got away with it for as long as I could, right?
Who else? That's you, Councilmember Sutherland.
It's not a question, but it's a thank you. The fire on Sacramento, it was Sacramento, you had, you lined Sacramento and New York Drive, where I live, that's all we saw, were fire trucks, and the good thing, first you were quick, which was very good.
I like hearing that.
Yeah. And also, and I know I saw Karen here someplace, Gibson, she'll be happy to know that it inspired the people that I've been trying to get busy with Map Your Neighborhood, because all of a sudden, they're realizing what happened if I were not home when this happened, and so, we had an inspiration going, so I'll thank you for that.
Okay, good.
Mine is also not a question, but a thank you. I want to thank you and the sheriff. You made four families in my community happy with the toys that we got from you guys. It went far. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Councilmember Knapp.
Quick question, is it possible to get census tract alongside, like we do with the sheriff's report, so that we know which census tract these took place in? I can go look them up, but I'm just wondering if you can produce that information?
If somebody can give me a copy of all the different census tracts, I'm not going to make any promises, because it adds another component to trying to do this, and I'm doing 15 to 20 of these every month, so it might, I'll try.
Councilmember Delatorre.
Back off of Councilmember Knapp, I actually have the link to, it's a Google Maps, and it has the overlay of all the actual census tracts colored and all that, so that might make it a little bit easier, so I'll send that to you, hopefully that'll make it easier for you to identify.
Yeah, if it's, if I'm going to have to look at maps as I'm doing this to try to identify, I'm going to tell you it's going to add way too much time to this report. So, I mean, I'll see, send me the link and let me see what's going to be involved on my end, and I will try it.
Yeah, what it is, is just, it's just a regular Google Maps, it's just zoomed in on Altadena, and there's just an overlay, so you use it like you would use regular Google Maps anyway, but yeah, if that makes it easier.
All right.
Okay, well, again, we're not trying to give you a whole lot, just, I would say, if possible, if not, I believe we will understand. And Councilman Knapp, I know you would like to have that, but we don't want to overburden what they already doing. We're now dealing with mudslides and fire, when we needed the water or the rain, it didn't come, so now, it came, and it's all mud everywhere, but we do thank you for the report, it is very, very detailed, and we thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Okay. All right, moving on to the Cert, Deputy Dan Page, okay, not here, Dan, this is the other people we like, we love to see. Mr. Van de Veldy is not here, but we have Ms. Gibson to make that report, so thank you, this is Map Your Neighborhood.
Good evening, Chairman Akori, I'm sorry, Chairman Isami, and town council members, and our fellow Altadinos. I'm going to put up kind of a Mickey Mouse sign, I hope you'll forgive me for this, but sometimes I announce this contact information so quickly that I'm positive people are left wondering what I just said. So if you want to connect, if you want to contact Altadena Map Your Neighborhood, there are three ways to do it, and I've displayed them here. The first is our email, our phone number, and you can now find us on Facebook. If you're interested in Map Your Neighborhood, which most of us know by now, is a hyper-local, street-level disaster preparedness plan, program, where neighbors get together to make a plan for their neighborhood to respond to disasters of all kinds. It has the added benefit of building community cohesion, so I encourage you to do this in your neighborhood. Could I just see a show of hands of people who know anything about Map Your Neighborhood? That's awesome. Woo, and look at how many of you people do. Okay, can I see an additional show of hands of those of you who've been through the process with your very own neighbors? That number's growing. That number is definitely growing. We are currently at about 5.7, over 5.7% of Altadena's 15,250 households. So if you are interested in learning about Map Your Neighborhood and about how you can hold a meeting at your place, or if you can con one of your neighbors into hosting a meeting, then I encourage you to come to one of our training sessions, that is, they are listed on the flyers that I gave out, there are more at the back, on the piano, if you didn't get one before. Councilmembers, are there any of you who didn't get the email with the flyer that I sent? Are you all good? Yeah? Okay, super. I really appreciate you putting it up on the website and publicizing it with your constituents, that's excellent. We have a full schedule, six meetings coming up at the Altadena Town and Country Club, that they've generously given us that space to host meetings, but we also have, we're in negotiations with four churches. I think Eric reported to you in December about a very successful church meeting that was held at the Metropolitan Baptist Church, very successful, well-attended, and we hope to duplicate that in churches all around Altadena, since they are hubs for the community. So Lisa Van de Veldy, Eric's wife, who takes care of scheduling our support for neighborhood-based meetings, tells me that if everybody holds a meeting, who came to a training and said they would, we would have 100 meetings this year. That's a lot. So to that end, I'm asking that if anyone else in the community who's interested mildly or passionately in helping us to support other neighborhoods to hold their meetings, please get in touch with us. We'd love to have some more volunteers to help us spread the word and build a safer, more resilient Altadena. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We always appreciate your presentation. Okay, hold on one moment. Councilmember Matthews.
Yes, ma'am. Karen, I want to thank you, because Altadena Methodist Church.
Mike, please.
I believe you've spoken with Altadena Methodist Church?
Lisa probably has done that.
It's on?
Yeah.
Oh, speaking, yeah, I guess we have to be careful.
You spoke, you have spoken with them?
I'm sure Lisa has.
Okay, and there's also the Lutheran Church that will be contacting you, and I believe the Catholic Church, and then there's some high school students that would like to know more about Map Your Neighborhood.
Isn't that beautiful?
I think so.
That's great, thanks for that.
Thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
Okay, emergency preparedness is real. I was very scared. On Sunday, I was at a meeting in Honolulu, and it sounds like everybody is calm, but when everybody in the room, their cellphone went off, it was like a big siren in the room, and it was so chaotic, people ran out, people were in their car racing, so whatever the television did was nothing compared to the real-life experience, and some of us, luckily, who knew what to do, were heading as low as we could go to find shelter. So wherever you go, I know we're trying to map our neighborhood here, I hope that we get all that put together very well, so that we know what to do, but when you go outside, is a lesson for me, I have to look for a place to go, a place to hide, or take shelter when I'm outside of my convenient location, so it is real, so take advantage of it. And Karen and Mr. Valverde, we really appreciate what you are doing. Okay, moving on to, okay, I think that's it. Now, a lot of people are waiting for us to give some official information on the report, police brutality, excessive force, so there's no other person that I know that can give us that information on straight, other than Councilmember Dr. Thomas, so it's a special presentation, but it was not set up as such, so I will turn it over to Dr. Thomas to educate the community.
Good evening, everyone. Mr. Chair, Altadena Town Council Members, and to the Altadena community. First, let me say that the Altadena Town Council Community Relations Committee has been asked to vet what we see as a very sensitive issue, which as most of you know, is the alleged physical confrontation between Pasadena Police Officers and Mr. Chris Baloo, I mean, who is a resident of Altadena. Yes, ma'am, it did happen.
Okay, this is a report, the community, I should have said, that will have the opportunity to speak, so now it is the town council member and the committee, a special report, so that will be, there'll be some discussion, so please respect the people that are up here that are present, and you want to be respected. Thank you, continue.
And I will say before I, can you hear me all right? I'm not allowed to talk, but if you can hear me, okay. A lot of what, a lot of what we are reporting are the facts as they are today, and as you hear things during the report, you might think that those aren't finished, and they are not, so we can't go any further. Now, we've been asked to vet this, and it is a sensitive issue, but to ensure that the matter was vetted properly, and to the very best of our knowledge, we have communicated with several different people and groups. We first of all talked to the Altadena Sheriff's Captain, Vicki Stuckey, we also spoke with Pasadena Police Chief Philip Sanchez, we spoke with many, thank you, of the Altadena Town Council Members, as well as numerous community members. Now, from these communications and others that we gathered, it has been determined that there seems to be misunderstandings regarding the jurisdictional ramifications surrounding this particular matter. this particular matter. So we've asked Captain Stuckey, when she comes forth, along with some other things, to address this jurisdictional concern, which will explain why the Chris Ballou matter is a Pasadena issue, and Altadena is not, and should not be, right now, really directly involved. Captain Stuckey concurred that Altadena personnel are not involved, but stated that anyone with concerns, feel free to contact her or to go directly to the Pasadena Police Department because it is really their issue. Pasadena Police Chief Philip Sanchez stated that there is a full investigation underway, and that his department is diligently working with a local community group comprised of individuals from the Western Justice Center, the NAACP, some unions, and several other groups. He also stated that they will provide further specifics, because we have asked, as these outreach programs develop and move forward. We, on the Community Relations Committee, and my committee members are Councilmember Judy Matthews, right there in that corner, and community advocate, Mr. Elliot Golds, sitting here on the front row. I'd also, right now, before I go any further, I'd like to thank all of the council members for their input, but specifically, Councilmember Veronica Jones, Census Track 4610, that's where the incident occurred. I want to thank her for her due diligence and her concern to the matter in her Census Track. Now, I've shared the community's concerns with Captain Stuckey, and I emailed her all of the questions from the council and the community. She has acknowledged receipt of them, and she is prepared to come before us now and respond. So Captain, oh, she was on her way. Captain Stuckey's on her way, and as she comes, I want to read you. Is that okay, Captain Stuckey? I want to read the questions? And then, she's already prepared to respond. Question one, what departmental changes have been made to address issues such as these in our community? Number two, although we've not had these issues in recent years, what has been done to prevent or discourage these activities? Number three, the question said, Captain Stuckey, can you please explain the jurisdictional structure? Number four, how will information be shared with the community on all public safety issues? Number five, in the past, we have had these issues. How many have we had in the last 12 to 24 months? Number six, is there a civilian oversight commission? Number seven, is our law enforcement trained on how to develop better relationships with this community? Number eight, can a subcommittee be formed to work with Captain Stuckey and the Altadena Sheriff's Department to deal with public safety, preserving dignity, race relations, homelessness, and mental health issues? And the final question, how can we promote justice and equity in law enforcement more generally, besides protest, besides protesting? Now, what we've shared with you are the questions that were presented to us, and now, I'd like to ask the captain if she would respond.
Thank you, Dr. Thomas, and good evening, members of the Town Council and citizens of Altadena. As Dr. Thomas said, I've been asked these questions and been asked to respond to you regarding the matter of Chris Ballou and the Pasadena Police Department. First and foremost, I need to stress to everyone that this is a, this investigation is regarding the Pasadena Police Department, and as Dr. Thomas stated, if you have any questions, we need to have those questions go to Chief Sanchez. And also, if you'd like to be heard, you can also go to the Pasadena City Council Meeting, and their next meeting is January 22nd. I didn't note that the time, but they also do have an open forum or public dialogue where you can ask questions at their meeting. So three of the questions were the, more or less the same. So question one, what department changes have, have been made to address issues such as these in the community? Has the same question as number two, although we have not seen these issues in recent years, what have, what has been done to prevent or discourage these types of activities? And question number six, which asks, is our law enforcement trained to develop better relations with the community? So to respond to both of those, three of those questions at one time, our department, the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department, has been at the forefront addressing various community issues. To ensure that our personnel are well-trained, they attend some of the following training, racial profiling and cultural diversity once every five years. As part of this training, personnel attend eight hours of training at the Museum of Tolerance. During the training, there are lectures, group discussions about race relations, and on diversity in the communities that we serve. We also attend racial profiling, and we go to various updates. Last year, we began sending our sworn personnel, and those are the deputy sheriffs, our, our non-sworn are called our professional staff, they're sent to now a 32-hour training dealing with persons with mental health issues and calls for service. As of today, 85% of our sworn personnel assigned to Altadena Station have attended this mental health training, and a majority of our calls today in Altadena deal with some part of mental health issues. We continuously have recurrent training on tactical communication and discussions and briefing. All of this is in addition to training that deputies receive when they go through their 20-week academy. We also have a new training, and the acronym is POP, P-O-P, and it's Pull-Over Protocol, and it strives to educate the public about what to do when pulled over by law enforcement. And I didn't mark down their website, but if you email me, I'll give you that website, and we'll start putting on that training for the public. The next question is, could you please explain jurisdictional structure? As a peace officer for the state of California, I can enforce, and all other law enforcement officers from California can enforce the laws in the state of California. As you know, the jurisdictional lines between Altadena and Pasadena are very fluid. In some areas, one block, you could be in Altadena, and you can turn the block and you can be in Pasadena. Just because an officer observes a violation in one city, he or she can make the stop in a neighboring city. Each captain or chief would prefer that our personnel stay in our own town or city, but periodically, personnel find themselves in an adjoining town or city. As you know, crime does not stop and start in the same city or town. How will information be shared with the community on all public safety issues? Currently, Altadena Sheriff's Station disseminates our weekly crime stats via Nextdoor on our Facebook account, Nixo, Instagram, and Twitter, and I've been told that 17, 17% of the citizens of Altadena are members of Nextdoor. We also will do press releases that are generated in certain circumstances to the local newspaper. In the past, we have seen these issues. How many have we had in the last 12 to 24 months? When they stated these issues, I'm believing that they're speaking about force issues and communication issues. Regarding force, I can only speak about the Sheriff's Department, specifically Altadena Station. We categorize force in various levels, levels one, two, and three. What I saw on the video is what we would consider a level three, and we have not had a level-three use of force in Altadena in the two and a half years that I've been assigned at the station. So you're probably asking yourself, so how do you categorize a level three? So a level three is any shooting in which a shot was intentionally fired upon a person by a department member. Any type of a shooting by a department member which results in a person being hit. Force resulting in the admission to a hospital by the suspect. All head strikes with impact weapons. A kick delivered from a standing position to an individual's head with a shot foot while the individual is lying on the ground floor. Knee strikes to an individual, knee strikes to an individual's head deliberately or recklessly causing their head to strike the ground or any hard fixed object. Deliberately or recklessly striking an individual head against a hard fixed object. Any skeletal fractures, with the exception for minor fractures of the nose, fingers, or toes caused by any department member. All canine bites or any force which results in a response for our Internal Affairs Bureau Response Team. All of our category three investigations are handled by our Internal Affairs Bureau. After we have completed a use of force package, obviously, I review the force packet. Once I put my stamp and approval on it, it is sent downtown, while my commander also reviews it, and my chief also reviews it. If there are any questions, it is also sent back to me. There could be recommendations, such as some type of training that I have to send our personnel to, or sometimes we'll even have to change our, our policy, but that is what we consider a category three use of force that would be handled by our Internal Affairs Bureau. Is there a civilian oversight committee? The Sheriff's Department has a civilian oversight commission. The Oversight Commission reviews, analyzes, where appropriate solicits public input, and makes recommendation to the Board of Supervisors and the Sheriff on LASD operational policies and procedures affecting the community, or make recommendations to create additional operation policies. The next civilian oversight commission meeting is Thursday, January 25th, at 9:00 a.m. at the Municipal Water District at 700 Alameda Street in Los Angeles. The public is always welcome to attend any of their meetings. Can a subcommittee be formed out of and after a form to work with Captain Stuckey to deal with public safety, race relations, and mental health? I do have a local community advisory committee, also known as a CAC, that meets every other month to discuss neighborhood concerns, crime stats, and any other concerns of Altadena residents. If you're interested in becoming a part of the Altadena Sheriff's Station CAC, I'd ask that you see me after the meeting, or give me a call at the station. How can we promote justice, equality, and law enforcement more generally besides protesting? What I would ask is that you become involved in your community. Become a member of your neighborhood watch program, keeping the lines of communication open between you and your Town Council Member. Also become involved in one of the many subcommittees on our Town Council. Also, if you have a, a topic that you would like to discuss with me, my phone is always available. You can either come in and sit and talk with me, or we can talk on the telephone. Through my Community Relations Office, we periodically offer a Citizens Academy class. I invite everyone to attend this. Once we receive sufficient interest, we will schedule a class, and it lasts about four to six weeks. In the class, you will learn all about the Sheriff's Department. And also of note, if you don't know, the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department is recognized as, as a premier expert in the use of force. And that concludes the answers to all the questions that were presented before me.
Thank you. Thank you, Captain Stuckey. Let's give her a round of applause for her hard work that she put in to do this for us.
Thank you.
Don't go too far.
Okay.
And we thank you for providing some clarity to many of the questions that probably are on the sheets, but the ones that came in. And if you did not hear your question and you sent it in to me or committee, you know, just let the captain know. With that said, Mr. Chair, I'm going to move for acceptance of my report, but upon receiving a second, that will put this into discussion, which will include the, the public comment sheets. So I'm going to move for acceptance of the report.
Okay, so now I will, thank you so much, Dr. Thomas. What we're going to do is...
I want to say one more thing about the time. We have many, many people here and many, many sheets, so in, in all fairness to everyone, if we could kind of limit our comments to about one minute? Is that not enough? Okay. Well, I didn't want to, we, we have a lot of people and a lot of sheets. So if we could kind of limit it as, as close as we can, and we may come up with something else for you a little bit later.
Yeah, I have a, a suggestion. If, if your comment has been addressed by somebody else, instead of saying the same thing again, maybe you can just skip. The public comment standard is two minutes, but the chair also reserves the right to limit it if there are just too many people involved. But I think because this is so critical for our community, we see where we go, so please be mindful of the time. So we're going to start right away with Barbie Ishida. Start at two minutes.
Hi, just wanted to identify myself. My name is Barbie Ishida. I'm an Altadena resident and member of First Presbyterian Church, Altadena, which is an historically Japanese-American church. I'm part of Neighbors Building of Better Altadena, and I also attend the CCC, which the, which is the Clergy Community Council that I see Captain Stuckey at and Police Sanchez each month. First of all, I want to acknowledge Captain Stuckey's effort at providing professional development regarding de-escalation practices and for her station here in Altadena, and I want to thank her for being proactive in that regard. In light of that, I want to voice my frustration, anger, and sadness when I saw and heard about Chris Ballou's beating and broken leg for a tinted window violation. We all know that this is not right. This is not a right nor proportionate response. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay. All right, moving on to, I believe this is Chris Okerhauser. Okay, yeah, okay, thank you. All right, so right after that will be Stephen Gibson, so if you want to line up, and I, I get about three at a time. Monica Hubbard. And if you want to repeat your name when, when you get there, that'll be appreciated.
Okerhauser, Chris Okerhauser, from Pasadena, affiliated with the Coalition for Increased Civilian Oversight of Pasadena Police Department and the ACLU. And I come bearing good news, actually, for all of us. There's a new law that goes into effect this year in Altadena with the Sheriff's Department. It's called the Racial and Identify, and Identity Profiling Act, and what it is, is a requirement for all officers throughout the state to, and you will start, because you're a large organization, the Los Angeles Sheriff's Department, to make very detailed, take down detailed data whenever a stop, either pedestrian or traffic stop, is, is done. Right now, it's somewhat haphazard, sometimes not very much is taken down at all. The reason this is being done and was passed by the state is to see if there is evidence that would be captured by this data of racial profiling in stops, in traffic and pedestrian stops. And so, this will hopefully bring data, evidence, that will show whether or not this is happening. We happen to think that this was the case in Chris Ballou's case. In Pasadena, we're asking our police department, because we're a small police department, and we're not slated to actually start implementing this until 2023, to start in 2018 because of the Ballou incident, and because our city has surveyed its whole city recently, asking what they think of the police department. Most people thought it was a good department, but in northwest Pasadena, they have said that, I think it's about 72% of African-American residents feel, and 46% of the Latino residents feel that there is racial profiling, excessive use of force, and unnecessary stops going on. So, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
And any questions, I'm glad to answer.
And Monica? Okay, all right.
My name is Stephen Gibson. I live on Raymond...
I live on Raymond Avenue, just north of Calaveras, of the cemetery. Town Council, thank you for taking this seriously and giving us the time to speak. Altadena Sheriff's Department, thank you for giving us information. This is a Rodney King moment for Pasadena. It is a moment in history, what happened to Chris Ballou, and it won't go away. It is an issue for Altadena. It happened in Altadena to an Altadena resident, on the streets in Altadena, and it won't go away. This is a historic moment, and something has to be done. We can't wait for Pasadena Police to do their normal investigations, their investigation that will take years and years. We need action. We need action soon. This is a historical moment. This won't go away. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. After Monica Hubbard, we'll have Joan read back. Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman and representatives of the community on the town council, I'm going to eliminate the first three paragraphs of my remarks. I'll pass you the printed copy later. N B B A, Neighbors Building a Better Altadena submits that the beating of Chris Ballou suffered at the hands of the Pasadena Police and captured on publicly released P P D video cams has done nothing to protect Altadena residents, to help us feel safer in our own neighborhoods, and to strengthen trust between law enforcement and the people law enforcement officers purport to serve and protect. No one watching those videos can reasonably conclude that the actions of two Pasadena Police Officers exemplified P P D's stated values of pride, professionalism, and integrity. We also fail to see how the beating maintained the public's trust, particularly the trust of Altadena residents in whose town Pasadena Police were operating. N B B A asks the town council representatives, the town council members representing our town to get clarification on the following. We heard a little tonight, but we have more. Number one, under what circumstances may Pasadena Police Officers come into Altadena and stop motorists or pedestrians? Two, under what circumstances may Pasadena Police Officers use force on an Altadena resident they have stopped, and what are the rules, policies governing that use of force by Pasadena Police? Three, under what circumstances may Pasadena Police Officers cite Altadena residents for minor infractions, such as a missing license plate or tinted window? And finally, number four, how does P P D interface with the Altadena sheriffs, the Altadena sheriff's own traffic officers, and California Highway Patrol, the public safety entities looking out for the Altadena community's well-being, when P P D officers are in Altadena and pull over a motorist to cite the motorist for a missing license plate? We further ask the Altadena Town Council to publicly report back to the community at the February 20th Town Council meeting on what you have learned regarding these jurisdictional issues and use of force in our town. We urge you to be public advocates for this community and the people you were elected to represent, so that no further actions of this sort ever happen again. We are not just concerned. We do not feel respected. We do not feel safe. We are asking you to inform us, to reassure us, and to stand up publicly for humane and respectful treatment of all residents of this community, even if being the community's advocate moves you individually or collectively into a place of discomfort. We are asking you to be representatives for us all. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. We have Joan, and we'll have Julie, and then Karen, did you put your name twice?
I put my name here for this, but I would put it toward Monica.
Okay. All right, go ahead.
Thank you very much for this opportunity, and I want to thank you, Mr. Chairman, for stating that the town council is not, is opposed to the kind of police brutality that happened in our town. I would encourage that that statement be backed up by appropriate and logical consequences should such action ever occur again. This is a great opportunity for our community. It's an opportunity for us to take a look, to define ourselves, and what we will tolerate and what we will not tolerate. We need to be a community who strives to nurture, support, and provide a safe environment for our citizens and to formalize such. The police are employed by the citizens to honor and protect those citizens, and when a member of the community violates the laws and puts, and in any way endangers themselves or a citizen, something needs to be done. But I call for those law enforcement officers to treat each person that they stop like their own child. And a child needs to be disciplined if they are guilty of wrongdoing, but discipline them as if you would discipline your own child. It is, there's a movement going on right now called "It Is Time," which means that we are no longer tolerating sexual misconduct. Let that theme move beyond sexual misconduct into any kind of misconduct, including police brutality. It is time for this to end. Thank you.
Thank you. And you are Joan, right?
No, that was Joan.
Okay. No, that's, yeah, that's what I said. Okay, thank you. And we now have Julie. Julie, okay, that will be Ann Coleman, Dr. Coleman.
Greetings to the Altadena Town Council and the Altadena community. My name is Julie McEwen, resident of Altadena since 1960, Track 4613. I'm a retired public school teacher of 35 years, and I want to live in a community where there is trust and respect, not violence, on the body of Black women and men. I strongly oppose police violence. I'm very concerned about our public safety. I am against excessive use of force by police and law enforcement officers. I've watched the police body video cam of the vicious beating of Christopher Ballou. It's upsetting. I'm appalled. It's unacceptable, and a million other words I won't go into, but is this the new Jim Crow in Altadena? These two Pasadena Police Officers, Larry Esparsa and Zachary Luzon, should be suspended and terminated. Perhaps we need ongoing training every year on the use of de-escalation tactics in order to reduce the need for force. Also, we need the implementation of the Racial and Identity Profiling Act, which I'm glad we know is going to be in Altadena, but we need it in Pasadena, Arcadia, Temple City, everywhere in our communities where we all live. We are all in this together, so let's take swift, strong action and end the violence on the bodies of Black women and men. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Dr. Coleman, after that, it will be Stephanie Ballard, and then Nicole Moore.
Council members, the beating of Chris Ballou by Pasadena Police was clearly a case of racial profiling. You can't imagine that happening to a white person. And we cannot stand by and let this harassment and targeting of our African-American neighbors go on. We must take a stand against this, this terrorizing of people of color in our community. We heard that this investigation is in the hands of the Pasadena City Council, the Pasadena Police, but that doesn't mean we have to stand by and do nothing. We can ask the Pasadena Police Department, the City Council, to look into their policies on training the police, on their description, their recommendations on the use of force. We heard at the Pasadena City Council meeting that even a lawyer from the A C L U could not understand the instructions on the use of force, when and how much was appropriate. They need to look at their policies, they need to look at profiling training, and they need to look at their recommendations on the use of force. And I think it's quite appropriate for the Altadena Town Council to write such a letter to offices in Pasadena. You don't have to sit by and just wait for them to take care of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Coleman.
Good evening, Chairman and members of the council. This is my first visit here to your meeting in Altadena. My name is Stephanie Ballard, and I am here representing a grassroots organization called White People for Racial Justice of San Gabriel Valley. Altadena is a part of San Gabriel Valley. We, frankly, this Altadena wasn't on our radar before now, but now it is, and I am here not to take a lot of time, but simply to let you know that you're on our radar, and, you know, we are now concerned about the incident, and I attended the Pasadena City Council meeting last week. Many of the Altadena residents said similar words as they are saying here tonight, that they do not agree with what has happened. I am in agreement with that. What happened is wrong, and I heard tonight that Dr. Thomas was implying that it's not your problem, that any comments need to go to the Pasadena officials. However, I disagree with that. I think it is your problem because the Pasadena Police seem to think that they can leave their jurisdiction and insert themselves into situations wherever they like without consequence, and they really had no business pulling a man, young Black man, over for tinted windows. That would not qualify as a serious risk to public safety, so there is no other explanation than this was racial profiling. Frankly, my group has zero faith in the Pasadena Police to do the right thing, and I think it's going to require some pressure on the part of the citizens as well as you all, the officials, to hold them accountable for what happens. So anyway, thank you for this opportunity.
After Nicole, it will be Steve Lamb.
Hi, my name's Nicole Moore. I live in 4610. Thank you, council, for addressing this issue tonight and for your serious words about how it isn't right what happened. I left my partner and my child at home tonight to be here. It was two nights before the video was released that my partner and I were driving not two blocks from where the incident happened, and the police shined a light into our car. We don't know if it was the sheriff. We don't know if it was Pasadena now. My partner, who's African-American, her heart fell. I said, "It's going to be okay. I don't think they're looking for us." Thank God I was in the car. What I want to ask is what this body is going to do to help my family feel safe in this I left home. I'm not reading stories with my daughter, and they want to know what this body is going to do. They know that I will put my life on the line to protect them. What are you doing for the community in 4610? We feel the pressure, and frankly, it harms our relationship with the beat cops from the Sheriff's Department because we don't know who is in the lighted car. Please, this is a public safety issue for Altadena, and it is very good that we're having this discussion here, but this body needs to put pressure on the same people that we've been asked to talk to, which is the Pasadena Police Department and Police Chief and the body of Pasadena. We need you to take action so that I can feel like, when I go and cast my ballot for the town council, that it has meaning in my life more than fences and hedges. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Steve Lamb. I'm here tonight for the Center for Progressive Urban Politics. We're a national organization, and one of the things that we work on is police violence. I'm going to disagree a little bit with everyone who's spoken. This is not a racial issue only. I was beaten November 12th, 1987, by the Pasadena Police in an almost identical beating, choreographed the same way that Chris Ballou's was. This is not an aberration. This is part of a longstanding pattern and practice of abuse by the Pasadena Police of various citizens, not just Black people, anyone who looks to them like they might not be wealthy. I have several friends and family members who are police. They've seen the video. They won't say this in public, but they've all said to me that the stop was illegal, it was out of policy, and that every action that those officers took violated standard police practice. I'm not going to ask you to beg for Pasadena to do the right thing because I know that's a fool's errand. I'm going to ask you to be responsible to the citizens of Altadena who you supposedly represent, and I'm going to ask you to please write the supervisor, Supervisor Barker, and ask her to have the district attorney, Lacy, inquire into this matter because that is the responsible and reasonable thing to do, and she is the only person on the county side who can bring for us justice and can force the Pasadena Police Department to stop this longstanding pattern of choreographed abuse against citizens. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Ms. Gibson, you've given up your time for the other one. Are you still one who would like to speak? You yielded. Thank you so much. Okay, that concludes everything I have on that. Do you have anything else? Okay, all right.
The rest of the public comment, though.
Yeah, we will get to that. But I just want to make sure we close that. Okay, Councilmember Marcusson.
Yeah, I'd like to recommend that we put together a letter to the mayor of Pasadena, whoever's appropriate, just letting them know what information we got tonight from our citizens so that we can, to summarize what they are saying to us and what we're seeing.
Yeah, much appreciated.
Can we expand that to the mayor also again, to the supervisor? So we can do the supervisor's office and the mayor of Pasadena, so that we can go beyond, so we can pass a message of what we're hearing to the proper department.
Yeah, that's already one of the recommendations that was made, that a letter moved forth.
Okay. All right, I believe the committee is already is working on that, and personally, I've reached out to the police chief, but I went ahead and left it in the hands of the Community Relations to work that. There are other things that are being planned to see if we can get some additional, our collateral forum, but I am reluctant saying that at this point, but there are other things that we are working on to see if we can make it happen in Altadena because we feel the same way that the community feels. And by the way, we have a representative from the supervisor's office also present in the room. The deputy field rep for the supervisor is here too. So anyway, but we are working on it. We heard the community loud and clear, and those are some of the things that we are working on putting together. Okay?
And it happened in my senses track, and...
It's very personal as a town council member, as a wife, a mother. I have four brothers. We all have stories about the police department and how we've been disrespected and handled. And so I'd like you to wait till the end of the meeting, my census report, because there is something that... there is something that will come out of that that will even shed a little bit more light on this. So I know I'm, I'm at the end of the report, but it is important. And to let you know that I'm coming from a very sensitive point of view of what happened. It's not, and that's why I pressured this council to do something. That's why I made the phone calls. That's why I started in December when I found out it happened in November. And when I got a call, I immediately did this because I do believe that we have a good sheriff now, but we haven't always had that. We haven't always had that. And we don't, and I know that even though you win the battle, you haven't won the war. You have to keep on fighting. You have to keep on, and you have to keep it up front. So if you will, just give us a few more minutes at the, toward the end of the meeting to just kind of hear my census report. I'd appreciate it. If you have to go, you have to go. And I did hand a, if you didn't give me your email address, if you do want to give it to me, I will keep you updated on what I am doing. So that's, I just wanted to interject.
Yeah, I get that. Okay, Councilmember Matthews, we're trying to move this thing along because there'll be additional discussions later.
Well, that's why I'm, that's why I'm.
Okay, go ahead.
Chairman, to avoid splitting this discussion, I would like to request that Veronica Jones can lead into her, her census tract report if it's only addressing what we're discussing, well, the portion that's addressing what we're discussing now, to avoid having it at the end. It's a motion. I would like to motion.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, let's make sure we understand that there is a motion and is properly seconded. I'd like to, and this is specifically any portion of this 4610 report that is dealing with this matter to be brought up at this time so that we can conclude. All minds clear? So, all in favor? Anyone opposing? Anyone abstaining? Okay, Councilmember Jones, you have the floor.
Okay, thank you. And I want to thank you all for being here and being engaged and concerned. On November 9th, 2017, in Census Tract 4610, the incident between the Pasadena Police Department and Christopher Ballou took place. Since that time, there's been a public outcry for information and facts relating to that matter. Tonight. Oh, sure, I'm sorry. Tonight, the attorney for Christopher Ballou will be here at 8:45 to shed a little bit more light on the incident. I am in the process of putting together a town hall meeting for our census tract to help residents get the facts and the answers regarding what happened. I've sent an email to the city manager of Pasadena asking for transparency and investigation in good faith. I worked there for 17 years, and I think that he will do that. He, the city manager is pretty straightforward. I'm not sure about Chief Sanchez because I, I haven't dealt with him. I will be closely monitoring and following the investigation. Altadena cannot stand by and not investigate the facts of something that happened in their neighborhood and involves one of its residents. Being silent is just as bad as participating in the act. And if you haven't given me your email, please do. And so I, John Burton told me he would be here at 8:45. It's almost eight, well, it's 8:46 because there was another incident just last week. And he wanted to tell us about that incident. And so he's not here to convince you one way or another. It sounds like you already know what happened, but he's here to tell you the facts as far as what happened to his daughter just last week in the same area. Now, I don't see him here, and we can, we don't, I don't want to hold up the meeting, but I do want to let you know that it is being worked on and that there is more that could be said. It has not stopped.
Okay, thank you so much. By the way, the town council is pretty coordinated in this. We just have a lot of people working on several aspects of this. And 4610 is 100% under the guidance of the two council members that are representing that census tract. But this is an Altadena matter. It's Altadena matter. It's not just one census tract. All right? Okay. I do have, what I'd like to do is the committee that we asked to look into this made a report. So I would like the town council to accept that report. And part of it has to do with also, we're going to do letter as it's been motioned. So the report that has been presented, I think it was properly motioned, seconded. So I'd like to say, all in favor of the report that was presented, say aye. Anyone opposing? Okay. Thank you, Dr. Thomas. And there are other public comments that are not directly related to the, this incident. So we'd like to get into that. I would like to start with Michelle Zach. She wanted to talk about, I let her speak for herself, but she, she did indicate here that she supports the speakers that are protesting for the police brutality, but that's not what she's talking about. So specifically, the Altadena Triangle.
Good evening, council, and I'm happy to be here tonight on behalf of Altadena Heritage. I just wanted to give a very quick update on, on the Triangle Park. I hope that all of you have had a chance to look at it, and it's growing in. It's really looking beautiful. And I wanted to thank the council and the community for all of the great support, the, in terms of cash in helping us complete the park and also people who helped to, to plan it up. I just wanted to say that we still have the big monument sign, and that should be going in. That's a big sign. It's four feet tall and eight feet long. It will be on the north side of the park toward the narrow end that will just say Altadena. And it will be like part of the branding signs that we're having at the boundary of Altadena. There's going to be two other monument signs and then some, some pole signs just to help people have a feeling they're in Altadena. And we were able to grab one of those and put it in the park. So that's coming along. And then the other thing that isn't there is that we're gonna have seven or eight more historical signs, historical interpretive signs. So it's gonna have quite, it's not quite done, but it's looking good. And I, at the same time, I just wanted to point out that we have in the park already a memorial in honor that's dedicated to government employees, and that includes sheriffs, firemen, highway patrol who've given their lives on behalf of the park. And so I just wanted to just pass this around to show that we have this monument in the park. And that, here's another picture. It just, when you look across the monument, it looks right at the sheriff's station. So I just wanted, as an informational item, to let you know that. And the other thing that I wanted to mention tonight is that right across the street, little bit further down, we have, oh, I think I've given the wrong one. We, oh, here. We wanted to, we've asked the county if we could plant some street trees along Fontanet Way. And I wrote to Jim Daly on the advice of Susie Neemer, who's here today, and he wrote right back and said that it seems like it's something he could look into and that definitely he'll look into it and that he would need the support of the town council. So I'm just asking also that we could have your support. The more that groups work together, the more that we can get done for Altadena. And just to enter into the record, here is his email. And we're thinking of like getting four or five new street trees on Fontanet Way. So that's my report or my, my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, we have Granny Shakoa. Okay? Thank you.
I don't know whether or not you're aware, but there is a new prison that is being planned, which is gonna, a new prison is being planned. It's gonna be worth $3.2 million that our supervisors are in favor of. A new prison?
Billion, not really.
Billion, billion. There you go, billion. I was afraid I was wrong. The thing is that I want the council to write a letter to Catherine Barker to say you're not in favor of it because that money could be used better for homeless people, people with mental health issues, for our education. And I just found out, I went to a meeting in LA, that originally the Twin Towers were supposed to be built for people with mental conditions. Obviously, that didn't work out. So I think it's just a waste of our money, our money, to build this prison rather than look for ways to help people who are already there to turn their future around. And all supervisors right now are for it, and I want everybody to write letters that we're against it, that we need to use that money better. Thank you. I have one other, you know I had two. So let me do my other one right now.
We have only one?
No, I don't. I have two. I have one for public relations, your public relations, how to serve our community better. So let me just say what I gotta say, and then I'll sit down. Okay. Hardly anybody ever comes to these meetings unless it's an issue that's important. One of the reasons is that we don't really know you guys unless we're active. So my suggestion is, and I was talking to somebody at the library, not Mindy, just regular people, and one of the suggestions they made was maybe quarterly or whatever, you could have a town council meeting in different areas in Altadena. So people who live maybe on the east side will be more interested in coming, or people who live somewhere else. The other thing is, when you had that placard, when we had that anniversary and you had everybody's picture, you guys should go to those events, not just you, everybody, so people get to know you. Because maybe if people get to know you and can talk to you, they'd be more interested in coming. That's my other comment. Thank you.
All right, David? David Waiter?
Hello, hello. My name is David Waiter, and I live in the 2800 block of Maiden Lane. I'm here about one thing and one thing only, and that's called speeders. And I'm done with it. I had my pet was killed on the 14th of December, hit by a car so fast that it split it in half. It's a 30 mile an hour zone. I am laying out and mapping Altadena, ladies and gentlemen, with every street, every MP find out how fast these people are going. We're 35s, 25s, speed bumps, and everything that everybody says we cannot have in this town. We don't have sidewalks. So let's get it together. I am gonna put this map out before the next council meeting so everybody can view it. And with the help of Dorothy Wong, I'm gonna have it printed, and everybody can take a copy of it. And map your own streets and your own speed limits. Next time, it's gonna be a child. There are 13 children living on Maiden Lane between Dolores and Altadena Drive. 13 of them, ladies and gentlemen. When are we gonna bury one of them? Think about it. You have grandchildren, you have your own children, you have friends, you have elderly people walking dogs. I'm gonna very give you a real quick example right here. January 7th, speeders, 16 at 8:00 AM to 9:00 AM. No stop at 8:00, mind you, 8:00 stop signs at Palm and Maiden Lane. 8:00, 8:00. Five streets intersection, 8:00 stop signs. No one stops. You call the sheriff's department, "Sorry, we don't do speeders." You go to the highway patrol, they'll put an SUV in the middle of the street, and everybody sees them, they don't stop. So the highway patrol has a form, ladies and gentlemen. It's called Traffic Complaints. Fill it out. I'm gonna have them print it up, and they're gonna be on that piano. Boom. I can go through this list of speeders and people who don't stop. January 8th, AM, 13 speeders, 22 no stops. PM, 12 no stops, 16 speeders. 1:09, 10 AM, 12 speeders, no stops, 17 speeders, on and on and on and on. If you want to drive by my house, it's 28:42. It's the house you can hold at. I spent 41 years in television. Nobody ever stopped for the thing. I need your help. We have to do something about the speeders before it's you. I have pictures of the four accidents that happened within that radius in a two and a half week period of time. Four accidents, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you. I need your help.
Thank you so much. Yeah, she did already. Okay. I think the last one we have here, oh, okay, there's Carlos Pens. I'm sorry, Ponse. Just made you a vice president.
Good evening. I have one, this is my first visit to these meetings, and I've been living in Altadena since 2004. And I'm gonna be regular now, from now on, because I'm getting tired of seeing people using Altadena as a dumping ground. Everywhere you go, I live at Fair Oaks Speedway. And I see people dumping refrigerators, baby carriage, grass clipping. And these people that do the dumping gets paid to dump it in a landfill, but they keep the money and they dump it in our street, and it stays there for days on. So what we need to do as residents in those areas is report it to the sheriffs. Report it to the sheriff's station. Do not keep it. Do not complain, and don't do anything about it. So as I've been doing that, and I also a member of the Christian Science Church across the street from Lake, and we have that area used as a dumping ground too, in the alley. Couches, beds, mattresses, everything is in that alley. And that's supposed to be a fire lane. I never seen a fire department go by and check it often. I don't see, they should have gone through that alley ever. So we need to get involved about dumping. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I'll turn the floor over to Councilmember Marcusson. She has a lot of experience that will help you, Mr. Ponse.
Yeah. I really just wanted to say that we have everybody here, and everybody's expecting us to do a lot. We can do a lot more to help you with those kinds of items. We will call the county and get the work, get the trash picked up. But we have to know where it is. We're 16 people out of 40,000. So anybody can call me. I'm always happy to help. But also, if you'll go to the website and see who your census tract person is, if you want to say where, kind of where you live, we can figure it out tonight and tell you.
I live in Fair Oaks, 3353, across the right of the cemetery.
Across from the cemetery. So who's, is that, who's that? So let me tell you, one of the things that I've done in the past is that we have had, maybe have every so often, a problem on Sacramento where it goes across and turns into what, Raymond, Raymond Lane, where it goes kind of around, right, by the, south of the cemetery. I made arrangements to have that street looked at every week by Athens because we were having a terrible dumping problem there. So I, I just want to say, we can, we can help you with that stuff. Believe me, there's stuff we can't do, that we can. We're here to help you work with the county. So if you'll call, every single one of us have email addresses that are all the same, our first name, our last name, ourfirstname dot lastnamealtadinatowncouncil.org. Our telephone numbers are on the website. And if you get one person, we'll pass off to other people. If you're, if we're not your person, I take information all the time and send it over to other people that it's theirs. But we can help you with that, with those things. We can help you with the speeding, quite frankly. So if you can just give us a chance to help you with that stuff, okay?
The county gets signs that says it's a $1,000 fine for dumping.
Right. But they can't ever catch them dumping, so. They can't ever catch the people that are dumping, so we just have to get it cleaned up all the time. That's all we can do, really.
Well, I did catch it, and I got rid of it.
Okay, all right. Well, then, then get in touch with your census tract person, and we'll help you.
Councilmember Sanyika, thank you, Councilmember Marcusson.
I'm 4603.02. I'm at Fair Oaks and Ventura. And we were having a serious dumping problem right there, and I had a no dumping sign put there. And Athens trash is going by regularly.
Right.
But they're still dumping. They're still dumping.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, but they are, they do, you know, they do come by regular and pick up the trash. But we do need to do something about the dumping.
Well.
You know? If it means more signs posted.
But the signs don't stop them.
Some type of surveillance.
Oh, yeah.
But I have to definitely agree with you.
Okay, let's move on on this. We've heard what you said, and we've been working on it, and we just need to do a better job. But again, you being a member of the community, when you see something like that, reach out to someone so that it can be taken care of sooner rather than later, so that other people don't join in dumping more when they see one. Okay, Dr. Coleman?
Thank you, Chair. Councilmembers, I see that we have, we're gonna hear a talk on Get Healthy Altadena, and I look forward to hearing that. But I would like to point out that one part of getting healthy or being healthy is living in a healthy community. And a healthy community is one where you feel comfortable walking to the store, taking a walk, riding your bicycle, crossing an intersection. And a lot of those, those features are very, much in line with the concept of complete streets. Complete streets are streets that are designed to be accessible for everyone, vehicles, bicycles, pedestrians, handicapped people. And I wouldn't, if you are not going to, there's gonna be a talk on complete streets next Tuesday night at the Acona meeting, and if you're not gonna be volunteering with the homeless count, I would encourage you to come to the Acona meeting and hear about complete streets. What the, it's gonna be a county representative giving the presentation, and we'll hear about what the county policy is, and what the county is doing, and specifically what they have planned for Altadena in the way of complete streets. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And finally, and this is an exception we make, because Councilmember Jones indicated that, so we would like to bring for public comments purposes, Mr. Button.
Thank you very much, Chair, Councilperson Jones and everybody. I'm kinda here wearing two hats. I'm a lawyer. I've been doing police misconduct for a long time. I was retained by the Ballou family to represent Chris's interests after he was really savagely beaten at the mobile station at the intersection of Woodbury and Fair Oaks in the city, in the community of Altadena. And when I took this case, it's kinda special because I live in the Meadows. I've lived in Altadena for twenty-nine years. My wife has lived here much longer than that. I was born in Pasadena. My mother was born in Pasadena and still lives there. My father was a very prominent merchant in Pasadena on Lake Street, kinda responsible for the Pasadena look. My grandfather had a business M&amp;M manufacturing on Washington. So my roots here are really deep. And when I saw that incident, I was absolutely horrified. And I could go over, you know, sort of blow by blow what's on the videos, which tell the whole story, but I don't think that's necessarily appropriate here. But I said I was here for, with two hats on, because when I got that case, I said, you know, this is me, this is my community. This could have been one of my very close neighbors that this happened to. And then, last Thursday, my daughter, who is part African American, was driving my car, my Prius, and she was on the way to my house to pick up my wife, to pick me up at the airport. And she was northbound on Fair Oaks, stopped at the light in Woodbury, that is in the community of Altadena, that is outside Pasadena. She had her hoodie up. It was eight-thirty in the evening. And while she was stopped at the light, she took a moment to look at the text of her phone like that. She then proceeded through the intersection, northbound, and was pulled over by two Pasadena police officers. They approached her. One went to the passenger side, the other went to the driver's side. They did this why, do you know why you're being pulled over routine? She said she had no idea. They ordered her out of the car. They patted my daughter, who's twenty-six years old, and she, I say so myself, she's pretty attractive, patted her down, sat her on the curb where she was looking directly at the gas station, at the exact spot where Chris Ballou was beaten. They asked to see her tattoos. They asked her if she had gang affiliations. They asked her why she was from her community. She lives in the north end of El Monte. Why she was in Altadena. They asked to search her car, which she gave the permission, not having her lawyer there to advise her that she should refuse consent. And it was absolutely humiliating. And this is an Altadena person in the community of Altadena with these Pasadena officers running these gang operations here, hassling and humiliating completely innocent people, including my own daughter. And my client, Chris Ballou, he could have been shot. They, this officer Esparza took his gun out, put his finger on the trigger, and the only reason he didn't pull it was the other officer, Luhon, was standing behind Chris Ballou, beating him with his fist. So I think that this council should tell Pasadena, stay out. They know where the border is. What they do there, we can deal with in a different forum, and Pasadena and their city council is getting an airful. But you people need to tell them to stop these operations. Both Chris Ballou and my daughter were stopped on a Thursday night by a special gang detail at, Chris was at seven forty-five PM, my daughter at eight-thirty, in Altadena. The whole thing took place in Altadena. So will you please stop it? And if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, but I think I've said what I wanna say.
Okay, thank you so much. We actually gave you a little bit privilege that we normally do. It was two minutes, but we appreciate that because the information you shared, we needed to hear that. So, and because this matter is under investigation and being litigated, so there's so much, we want to make sure we walk the fine lines here. But we are also Altadena, we know what we should be doing and what we need to do in terms of, going back to the earlier statement that police brutality is not tolerated in Altadena by this town council. That's our position, and we just need to maintain that. So we thank you so much for the opportunity to hear and from you. And I think that concludes the, the public comments on this. It's already, it's already too late. We concluded on that. Sorry about that. Okay, yeah, it's concluded. I'm sorry, we just can't continue. We did call for all comment cards to come in, and we just can't keep going. So, thank you so much. All right, moving on to the special presentations. And that will be. Okay, Hector Rodriguez. Thank you so much for your patience.
Absolutely. Thank you, Council Chairman. Good evening, Council. Good evening, resident of Altadena. Thank you for allowing me to be here on Assemblymember Chris Holden's behalf. Unfortunately, he's up in Sacramento, so he could not be here with us tonight. We just wanted to present a few year in review, a brief year in review on some legislative victories statewide and for our legislative package of this year. And I wanted to highlight some of the legislative wins for the state of California. I will begin with climate change. The state has extended California's landmark cap and trade program to combat climate change. In terms of housing, the state has approved a record-setting investment in affordable housing for Californians struggling with rents and unattainable home prices. For working families, the state expanded the Earned Income Tax Credit Program, lifting more families out of poverty by allowing them to keep moving, to keep more of what they earn. Assemblymember Holden's legislative highlights include AB fifty-six, which is aimed towards affordable housing, ensures California invests infrastructure dollars into the effort to combat the housing crisis. AB six seventeen, environmental justice strengthens air quality provisions in areas with the worst air pollution. AB nine five nine, services for developmental disabilities guarantees that no family will face barriers in accessing services simply because English is not their primary language. AB fifteen sixty-seven, former foster youth. This bill connects former foster youth with information they need to succeed in college. And on the local level, we would like to highlight that the Assemblymember worked with key stakeholders and elected leaders in Los Angeles Metro vote to prohibit measure R funds from constructions of the seven-ten freeway tunnel. As well as increased transportation funding for all cities within the forty-first Assembly District by one hundred percent. I would like to open this up to the council if they have any questions. Be happy to answer to the best of my ability.
All right, Councilmember Marcus.
I don't really have any questions, but please convey to Chris that we really appreciate the work he's doing for us, and we know he's working hard up in Sacramento, and we do appreciate all he does for us, so.
Absolutely, we do.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Any other questions from council? Okay, Councilmember Sutherland?
I was just wondering if you had a, I can't write that fast.
I do.
And it would be really helpful to have.
Absolutely.
Kind of the short version.
I have handouts that are available at the piano in the rear of the room. Absolutely.
Okay, thank you so much. All right, Get Healthy Altadena twenty eighteen, and Mr. Jim Morris, is he still here? Okay, well, I have been reporting on this, and this is an event that we have USC, UCLA, City of Hope, we have Kaiser. It is a free screening, ultrasound of the heart lever, just a host of screenings that are free to Altidinas, and that is almost a month from today, actually, a little bit over a month from today. It will be on Saturday, February twenty-fourth. We are asking Altidinas to come get healthy, and there will be lunch served. Okay, I will look into that and apologize for that, but we do, I believe there are, the flyers are in the bag because it's also in Spanish. So please come out, and it's a free event, and I believe we all need to stay healthy, eat well, and get tested so that if there are any issues, it can be rectified before it becomes a major problem. All right, so moving on to item number five point three, that would be Fallen Officer Memorial, and that would be Mr. Emmy.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and I had the opportunity this fall to spend a great deal of time over at what used to be known as Monument Park and is now known as Triangle Park. I spent a great deal of time working on the park. I'm a general contractor by trade, among other things. But I did it all as a volunteer. I drilled holes for plants, hundreds and hundreds of holes, far more than I anticipated I would. I wound up being prominently featured on the front page of the Star News on their article about the Owen Brown replica headstone, because I'm the guy who figured out how to install it. I advised on the installation of park benches, signposts, et cetera. Actually, did a lot of that myself, went out, figured out how to do it, acquired the materials. And so I spent a lot of time in that park, looking at what the park has, what the park doesn't, what, how beautiful it's actually now becoming. About ninety-nine percent of the plants, probably more than ninety-nine percent of the plants that were put in by volunteers, have thrived, and the park is turning into a fantastic place. But as I put in that fake headstone to Owen Brown, and after I read more about Mr. Brown than I had previously realized, like, I didn't know he was actually a traitor, that his father was convicted of being a traitor and was either hung or shot because they attacked a US military base, and. They were trying to free black people, but they killed a whole lot of Union soldiers in the process. And so Mr. Brown came out here as a traitor to his country under the law and hung out in Altadena, and here I was, thinking, oh, I kinda don't know the story at all, and here I am putting in this memorial, and it's kinda weird. But that's okay, because this is Altadena, and we do things a little bit differently here. But something I noticed that was missing, I mean, I've seen all the memorials, and I know all the memorials in Memorial Park. There is one, as Michelle Zach pointed out earlier, two government employees killed in the line of duty, which is kind of weirdly weirdly worded, because it has to do with two fire crew members out of La Cañada who were killed in the Glenn Allen incident. I don't know if you folks know about that, but it's now part of firefighting education that the way these individuals were killed is memorable. And yeah, they weren't like county firefighters, they were members of a county crew, so yeah, you want to recognize them as Rotary did, and thank them, you know, for their service and their sacrifice to the community of Altadena. So they came up with kind of an interesting way to word it. What I realized was missing in that park, known as Monument Park, is any sort of an appreciation from this community for the service and sacrifice of the fallen deputies from the Altadena Station, which is coincidentally located directly across the street from the park. There's a lot of reasons for that. I could imagine. I can't speak to it. The Altadena Station didn't become an independent station until just a few years ago. The first person to technically fall on the list for Altadena wasn't actually put on that list until nineteen ninety-six, even though he died in nineteen forty-one. I recently ran in the memorial run that was held for the deputy who died back in twenty-ten, forty-two years after she was injured in an accident. So there's a lot of reasons that I can see that there is no memorial. But I believe we need one. And I've been talking with a lot of people in the community, including actually Ms. Zach. She was the first person I talked to in the community, and I said, you know, it's weird, we have all these memorials, but there's none to the fallen officers. And as I recall our communication and discussion in the park one evening, she said, yeah, I can see we need one, but we really need to limit it to that. Well, I've been talking with a lot of people. I've been working with a committee of ten members, including Ms. Knapp here. I've got Silvira Grant, who is the president of the Altadena Community Garden, Mindy Kote, who is the director of the Altadena Library District is one of the members. I can read off the list, but you don't need to know that. What you may find interesting is it took Altadena Rotary two days to jump on the idea and say, yes, we're fully behind it. And actually, one of the officers started texting one of the deputy directors of the county parks to get this approved. I've been going through the process. We've got support from Altadena Rotary. We've got support just recently from the Altadena Chamber of Commerce, extreme support from the Association of Los Angeles Deputy Sheriffs, which is the union representing deputy sheriffs, ten, I guess it's about ten thousand members, also from the Athletic Association for the sheriffs. And what I've got in this bag, and one of the reasons why I think this is important, is we talk about us, community members, and we have them back there in the uniforms. And to me, the more us and them can get together, the more we can become we. And every year, there's a memorial run, literally run all throughout Los Angeles County in May to memorialize the fallen deputies of Los Angeles Sheriff's Department. They run four hundred miles, and they carry with them this torch, pardon my broken finger, but they carry this torch with them, four hundred miles throughout LA County. And every year, hopefully this will be the last year, it's wound up in the back parking lot of the. the Sheriff's Department behind the locked gate, and it's to commemorate the fallen officers. My thought and hope, and that of the Los Angeles, the Association of Los Angeles Deputy Sheriffs, the union and their Athletic Association and local members of the Sheriff's Department, is this year, it'll actually wind up in the park on what's now, it turns out, there's a large rock that was delivered recently as part of the plan for the park, and have that engraved with the names of the fallen officers and their, the date of their deaths. And then this can be placed on a small mount, and the assembled group can meet in that lower area, what's called Sheriff's Pad at the park, and we can be with them in appreciation for the service and sacrifice of the fallen officers who have lost their lives protecting our community. Now, that's more than enough that I've said there. I'd rather take questions and make sure I answer anything. What I'm looking for from the Altadena Town Council is the same thing I've asked these other organizations for, which is to show us support in the form of a letter to the appropriate official at county parks. Doesn't need to say much, but it just needs to say that you're in support of the memorial. So, like I say, be happy to take any questions you might have.
Thank you so much, Mr. Emmy. Any questions from council?
I have a question.
Okay, Councilmember Robertson.
Sort of a request for clarification. I'm trying to understand why the fallen deputies who served Altadena can't be honored on Altadena's memorial to public servants.
Well, I think it's a slap in the face to the deputies to be listed with government employees. If they were firefighters, in fact, the first time that I raised this issue with a deputy at the sheriff's station, first thing that was asked was, well, can there be a memorial to firefighters as well? And I said, wow, that's a really good question, let me look into it, and it turns out, yeah, the Fire Department, LA County Fire, does not retain a list the same way that the Sheriff's Department does, so they don't look at what station a firefighter was at at the time of their death, they look at the incident they were on. In this case, there are those two firefighters who are on that small tablet for the government employees who lost their lives. They were not, to my understanding, full-fledged firefighters, so I think it would be a slap in the face. Also, that little monument is not in the area known as Sheriff's Pad, it's up some stairs and along a small pathway, so you can't have a congregation adjoining, a grouping of individuals. The idea here is that, yes, there'll be text on this boulder, it'll only be visible from basically the sheriff's station, so that throughout the rest of the park, there's no indication that it's anything other than a nice, large boulder, so it doesn't impinge, impugn, anything else, it doesn't stand up and say, you know, it's a monument, it's just a large boulder.
Okay.
But if, if the existing monument isn't enough, or isn't good enough, and the purpose of a monument is to sort of be seen and tell a story and be meaningful to all who cast their eyes on it, then why wouldn't you want, in this new proposed monument, increased visibility, the sort of thing that you could see from wherever you were, as opposed to having to, you know...
Because I believe Triangle Park has become, with the addition of the additional signs Ms. Zach mentioned, it's going to become the park of a thousand signs. LA County just added some new street directional signs and no parking signs in the last week or so. Visual clutter is a problem. From the standpoint of the players involved, the Sheriff's Department, the Sheriff's Union, Rotary, the Chamber of Commerce, everyone I have spoken to really likes the idea of this monument. Now, we could vet it to a committee and spend two or three years and a huge amount of time doing this, or we could get it done, and that's the kind of guy I am. It's like, hey, there's a problem here, let's address this. And, oh, and I forgot to mention, the cost of this monument will be relatively nominal, far less than I even feel comfortable talking about, because it's so inexpensive. There will be a fundraising campaign throughout the community, that was suggested by, sorry, Captain Stuckey, to make it a community-based effort, and so any additional funds raised beyond the cost of the monument itself will go to the children's programs over at Loma Alta Park to serve the underserved children of our community.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Markerson?
Oh, well, I just actually just got this, it was going around, I guess, which is what you wanted to have put on here, so is the, so the purpose, the purpose of this, I'm afraid people are going to steal that, by the way.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, I should have said, this is only at the end of the run? No, I...
You're not leaving it there?
No, 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 while it's surrounded by sheriff's deputies, this will be there. No, this is, this is actually a treasured, I hate to say heirloom, but I was deeply honored that they were willing to let me have this, given the...
There's five of them back there watching you.
Yeah, no, I have it until the issue is, as they say, resolved.
Okay, yeah, okay, so what you're, so the purpose, because I, I'm sorry, I did get confused a little bit with the, with the torch. So what, what you're going to do is put this, these, sort of like this verbiage, I'm sure this is just the verbiage here, and then have it be, I guess I am, I'm feeling like, yeah, why wouldn't we want other people to see it, but you have found a place that you think is appropriate for it?
And I didn't bring it in because I didn't want to clutter. The, the lettering is fairly good-sized, and from that vantage point, it will be quite visible.
Okay.
And I should mention that the fellow doing it was, is known to the community, because not only did he do the engraving at the park, he's also worked with Altadena Heritage for the Marengo Park and the boulders there.
Okay, I just had a question about, and I apologize, I just am not understanding, is there somebody that's opposing this? Is, are we, is there a concern?
So far, everyone I have spoken to has been extremely supportive of it, and remarkably, every aspect and element of it has, I hate to say, I hate this word, organically grown.
Right, but is there, is there some, is the county saying no, or is the county...
No, 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 there, there, again, you know, you've heard the, the overabundance issue of signage at the park, and that's really a concern, but that's the only concern. Otherwise, I tell, you know, ALADS, the president met at the park with me, and we've emailed back and forth, and he's just extremely supportive of it. One reason I don't have a complete package as yet is I was actually waiting to hear from Captain Stuckey, and I anticipate seeing an email tonight. She took it up to her division chief to make sure they didn't have any issues with the verbiage, for whatever reason.
Okay, I, I just, I just was thinking, well, it was, if the county was pushing back on you, that we needed to be aware of that.
No, no, absolutely not, and I suppose part of it is, it's been a downer night, folks, you know, it's been police beatings, and I'm coming in saying, let's honor the police, and so it's kind of, you know, maybe I've, maybe I've taken the wrong tack, I don't know.
No, no, but it's the sheriffs, we don't have a problem with the sheriffs.
Right, absolutely, absolutely, and, and one of the issues that's been raised to me by, in fact, Ron Hernandez, the president of ALADS, his question was, as I showed him the mock-up of the boulder, his, his concern was, well, should we leave room for more names? And fortunately, it's been about fifty to sixty years between each fatality, and I raised that issue with the engraver, who said, no, you leave just enough so you can squeeze another in if you have to, but his, his experience has been that if you leave too much room, people think you're jinxing them, and the engraver does the firefighters' memorial up in Sacramento every year.
Okay, Councilmember Knapp, and then we will take a couple of public comments on this.
My question really is around the other monument. If this monument was intended, and it was erected in nineteen ninety-four, if this monument was intended to honor all fallen government workers, why weren't the sheriffs included ever along the way?
And that's a really good question that I can't answer. The only thing I can say is Rotary is way behind this new monument, and so, you know, they're the ones who...
Rotary is behind this monument?
They're, they're also the one who...
I know they did this one, but they're also, okay.
Oh, yeah, yeah, as I mentioned, they were, they were the first organization to come in behind it, and as soon as they did, they started pushing the county hard, so, you know, that's, that's all I can say.
Okay, I will, there are three comment, comment cards, and let me bring Bobby Ishida.
I would say that I'm probably in agreement with the point that Justin made about, you know, I think one monument for all the people that have fallen, I mean, we might as well erect one for teachers while we're at it, how about, you know, fallen Altadena council members, you know, I mean, it's kind of like, I don't know, it just doesn't seem appropriate to me just to keep making one monument for a specific group of people, and I think the park is, is nice, just the way, keeping it plain and simple, and one monument is probably good enough.
Dr. Komen?
May I address that, just because it was a question?
So, I, I think in deciding on whether to support this monument, you need to take the long view, and so I think periodically you may have more people coming up and asking to put monuments in Triangle Park, and at what point do you say we already have too many monuments and we can't go any further? So, I think if you have a monument that already covers fallen service personnel, I'm not sure you need to sort of add extra monuments for each branch of service, so I think you need to take the long view and not, not allow the park to get too many monuments in it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
On behalf of Altadena Heritage, I would respectfully agree with the last two speakers. We really do want to memorialize, you know, fallen sheriffs, anyone who's died in the line of service. There is a monument there, it's a very handsome one, it's about this tall, it's had two people on it, and there's room for, there's room for a lot more, and thank goodness, we don't usually have that many people to be added. We have some more signs coming, we'd like to avoid clutter, we want to have this to be a kind of a stately and gracious park, and I think what Ann said is so true, look at the park, it's been in a cup, one or two months, and here, let's do a monument for this group, let's do a monument for that group. We just don't think it's appropriate, we want it to, it's a very small park, we still have the large Altadena monument to come, we'd like to keep it a place of nature, a place of repose. Yes, we do want to memorialize any sheriffs or anyone else who dies in the line of duty. We care about these people very much, but we'd like to keep the park, avoid, you know, next, next month, next year, it's going to be someone else, so I respectfully would say that we have a monument that could be for firefighters, highway patrol, sheriff, town council people, if you die in the line of duty, and we would, we would like to keep it like, like that, thank you.
And if I may, just to respond, because questions were...
Just one moment, Mr. Reddick.
Just, just questions were...
You will, you will speak, you will, you will speak. That's, I'm getting there, okay, just last comments, and then we'll take it offline. We heard you loud and clear, you wanted the town council to submit their support for this monument, that's what you're asking the town council to do.
Yes.
I, we understand that, so we let you speak the last thing, because there's a couple of people that have said something, and then we will take it back, I think someone has suggested maybe a committee. We will make a decision as to how we're going to follow up on this, but we let you...
Well, we've had public comment for and against a plaque, right, so, tonight, so we probably need to look at it from a...
Yeah, it'll be us, we'll take a look at it internally, but we've heard you.
Okay, and thank you, and if I may, just really quickly, because questions were asked by members of the public, the last thought I would leave you with is that those people in those uniforms with those guns are the thin blue line, if you will, and arguably, they deserve a little bit more appreciation than a town councilman who keels over from a heart attack at a meeting.
What about the firefighters?
There are no firefighters from the Altadena area who have fallen in the line of duty in our community, to the degree that I was able to establish.
Okay.
And I want to let you know also that part of this process will be not only a fundraising effort, but an online petition. I haven't started that yet, we haven't started that yet, out of desire to allow all the pieces to be put in play, I anticipate we'll see several thousand online signatures for that, and it looks like you don't have a timeline for consideration of this, perhaps? Is that what I'm hearing?
No, that's not, because you made the presentation, we will then get back the best way that we, the most effective way, and be able to reach a decision, and if we need to hear from you again, then we will make that happen.
Okay, and will this go to a vote of the town council at some point?
At this point, we need to huddle together at some point, but we've heard you.
Well, and the reason I ask is that, that these other organizations have expressed their support, are going to send in letters, et cetera, I, I would like to wait to hear from the town council before presenting this to the county, but I don't necessarily see a need to do that, and so, you know, if, if, if you believe that this is going to take three or four months, or forming a committee or some other issue, then I believe the, the matter will simply go to the county absent a response from the town council.
With all due respect, we, we can tell you what to do, but for the town council, we reserve the right to get back together and come up with a decision one way or the other.
Great, thank you, I appreciate your consideration of the item.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, Land Use Committee, Councilmember Markerson?
Well, while we were meeting, the land was divided, no, I'm kidding, okay, we, the Land Use Committee met in January, we had two items, sorry, we had two items, we did have Grocery Outlet came and answered some additional questions for their CUP that we are looking into, we're working on conditions for that project, we would encourage everybody to keep track of, we may be, we may be voting on this in, at our February meeting, I don't know, but please keep track of the agenda if you're interested in the Grocery Outlet project. We also took action on the subdivision of one lot into four lots at six thirty-eight West Mariposa, and I wanted to turn it over to Sandra to sort of, there are people on town council that are not on land use, and so I wanted to make sure that they understood what she had, the work that she had gone through to vet the project.
Okay, it's all in your hands.
In the matter of project, I'm sorry, in the matter of project PMO six oh six six one, a subdivision of one lot divided into four at six thirty-eight West Mariposa, both councilmember Gloria Sanzica and myself, along with the owner of the property, not together, but different times, did our due diligence, we canvassed the neighborhood, we spoke with the neighbors, and the flyers were distributed throughout the neighborhood to notify the neighbors around the project of the January second land use meeting that addressed the project. No public comment was received. So without any further remarks, and if I'm in order?
Well, the, the committee voted on, the Land Use Committee voted on the project and recommended approval, so...
Oh, the Land Use Committee voted and recommended, I'm so sorry, thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. So without further remarks, and they are trying to appear before the county the end of this month, so that's why we're trying to vote this, they did all of their work, and they did it correctly. I move that the Altadena Town Council send the letter, send their letter on to the... their letter on to the Regional Planning Commission for approval of this project.
Okay. So, does the motion, is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Okay, so the motion is properly moved, and properly seconded. And additional discussion, questions?
Can we have questions?
Okay, Councilmember De La Torre.
Yeah, so, for those of us who weren't there, sorry about that again, Dan. Can you tell me what the vote was? Like, how many opposed, abstained, et cetera?
I think so. One abstention. We had one abstention.
One person abstained. I remember that.
Right. That's correct.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay, are there any conditions?
No.
Okay, so moving on. Councilmember, you have heard the motion, and it's properly seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose it? Any abstention? We have one abstention. Okay.
No, I'm sorry. No, I was making sure you don't always call for abstaining. Sorry, so I want to make sure you call for abstention.
There is one abstention. And did you say two? Any other person? Okay, okay. All right, one abstention, so the motion carries. And-
For the record, because Billy just brought it up, we did have an item on here, on your agenda for public comment. We did not receive any public comment cards for tonight for this project either. So, we've not had anybody come and make public comment at all on the project.
We will note that as well. So, it was presented, and there are no public comments at the town council meeting as well. So, the motion carries, and we will send a letter out to the, to the appropriate agency that the town council recommend approval. Education Committee, Councilmember Lee.
Is this on? Okay, there, great. We have two events this month. We have a mixer and a town hall. First, the mixer. It's a neighborhood mixer. This has been organized at the request of Principal Benita Scheckel of Altadena Elementary School. This is in a private home on East Woodbury Road. RSVPs are required, or at least strongly suggested, because this is a catered event. Many people in the boundary of Altadena Elementary do not know about this school. It has a French immersion program, and it is also just becoming an arts inclusion magnet. They just received a grant. So, there's wonderful things happening. People are sending in their RSVPs. We'd like to get a lot more. So, if you know people, and with, you know, we have open enrollment in PUSD. If people want to come and find out about French immersion and talk to the principal, that would be wonderful. So, email me.
When is the event?
Oh, January 21st at four, from four to six. Yes, it's a Sunday. And then the second event is our second official town hall hosted by the Education Committee. And there'll be parents, teachers, and principals, and town council members. I hope you all come. And we're going to discuss all of our public schools under PUSD. And this is going to be a little bit of a different event, in that we're going to discuss how our public schools are part of our community democracy, and how both things work together. And so, it will be fun, and there'll be some little take-home gifts. There'll be some swag.
Did you say it? I just say-
Oh, no, none. Haven't gotten there yet. It is, yes, swag. Education Committee swag. Tuesday, January 30th, from seven to nine.
Is it the library?
Right here.
Just saying, now, that's the same night as the Kona meeting, and it's the same night as the, I guess, than the homeless count.
No, no, not the homeless count. No, that's another night.
The homeless can't go to a Kona.
Really, a Kona?
Yes.
And so is this?
No, this is Tuesday the-
Oh, it's the next week. Oh, there are five weeks. Never mind. Sorry, sorry, sorry.
I'm fine, so.
There are five weeks in January. Okay, I'm sorry. Yikes.
Right in this room.
Seven to nine, you said?
Seven to nine. And I have flyers back there and here. And I can email anybody anything. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, community reports. And I start-
Does Sandra have it?
Oh, 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 wait a minute.
Yes, I do.
Community Relations.
Yes.
Okay.
I'm ready.
My apologies. That's 6.3, Community Relations Committee Report. Okay, 6.3.
I kind of thought maybe we would bypass in a little time, but it's very brief. Community Relations Committee, December Monthly Report. There are several things that are in the committee, some of which have been addressed. Several are still here, but they are things that are going on that we will be addressing. First of all, it was a medical marijuana dispensary on Lincoln and Altadena Drive. The complaint was referred by local residents in that area, referred to the Altadena Sheriff's Department. There was also a mural that we thought was going to be painted on Lincoln and the mural.
Yeah, so, I was coordinating the effort on that. He's still doing the mural. Everything's properly vetted, and he got all the correct permits and everything, but he said due to the political climate, he'd rather not have a public event. But you're more than welcome to follow him. I forget his handle, but he has his progress on his personal Instagram account, and he's hoped to be done by, I believe, this month or next month.
And will you let us know, though? If you find out, will you let us know?
Yeah, I can send you guys all, like, the link to his personal Instagram page with the progress.
And then the, I'm sorry.
That, the mural is near the corner of Lincoln and Altadena Drive, just southwest. And that, yeah, that's her census tract as well.
Right between here and there.
And, and, Nancy, you said that they're working with the county for approvals and everything?
No, so, when I brought this up last month, we mentioned possibly doing, you know, some type of commendation through the Altadena Town Council. And so, I reached out to him, and one of your concerns was that, is it properly permitted by the county? Because we don't want to do a commendation and then just be torn down, you know, a couple years later. So, I asked these questions of him, and he said he did everything properly. It's on personal property. He got the okay from the business owner, and he got the permit from the county to do this, and all the, whatever it is that gets it approved, he got it done. But it's just the, in terms of the commendation from us, he'd rather not do.
Okay. And the only reason I ask is that in a couple years past, we had another, we had a business that put a mural on the side of their wall, and the county said no. Somebody complained about it because they didn't prefer the art. And the county came out, and it actually was against county code. So, the only reason I bring it up is because that there are loads of people in Altadena who have opinions. And so, what he wants to do is protect himself against, right?
Correct, yeah.
That's why I'm concerned.
Yeah, I relayed those same issues with him, and he said, as far as he told me, everything is properly permitted. So, even if people disagree with it, which he hopes they don't, there's, I guess, it's properly vetted and okay by the county.
Okay.
Thank you. Number three, park assess, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
The mural is up.
It's, I don't think it's 100% complete.
Not quite.
It's, he's been, like, he's doing, like, the finishing touches. Last I saw on his Instagram page, it was like 90% complete. But it's like a guy sitting on the moon, looking at Earth with, like, some alien.
It's up.
So, Altadena Drive and Lincoln on the, not on the exact corner, but there's that liquor store, and then just south, there's, it's either a hair or nail salon.
You can't miss it.
I'm sorry?
You can't miss it.
Yeah, yeah. You can see it from the street.
You see the move.
I think it's like a pink-orange-y kind, yeah, type of, the building itself is that color, and you can see it right there. So, it's in that, where the dispensary used to be, or was, or is, whatever that issue is, it's on that same park.
Anything further? Can we move on? All right. Number three was park assessment and funding, the project. An update on that is, the county is aware of our needs as far as the parks. Everybody has their handout, and everybody's looking for the parks money. Starting July 1st, the county will begin doing presentations of the upcoming park projects, and ours will be included. So, they're going to try to get around to us to let us know in advance about those things that are going on with our parks. Number four, Monica Hubbard requested, and many of you might remember, the Census Trax representatives report monthly on PUSD schools and in their census tracts. We refer that to the Education Committee Chair. Five, recognition requested for Walker's Drug Store. The owner is deceased. First black-owned pharmacy, I believe. Attentatively, we have scheduled that to look into for Black History Month. Number six, certificate of recognition for Mr. Carl Dietz, 100th birthday. Our chair is to present that at Monte Centro on tomorrow, January 18th. Also, we have, 17, sorry, certificate of recognition to one of Altadena's oldest. I think it's, I have Mr. T. down here, Mr. Truman. So, that's still on our list. Number eight, neighborhood watch group night, to have a neighborhood watch group night at the town council for all the neighborhood watch groups. Finally, collaborate with the Chamber of Commerce to introduce awards for old and new businesses in Altadena. And oops, we will continue to follow the Chris Baloo situation with Pasadena Police Department issue. This is submitted by our committee.
Okay. Thank you so much. Once again, we appreciate the summary of things that you're working on, so the committee is working on. Any questions? Okay, thank you. Now, the Altadena Community Reports, and the Altadena Library, Director Mindy Kitay.
Thanks for staying.
Good evening. Thanks for having me. So, I'm going to keep it really short, which I'm sure you'll appreciate. Here's the January newsletter, and this document, which I'm really proud of, which is the Operating Plan Initiatives and Updates for the Mid-Fiscal Year Review, which hopefully you'll take a look at. And, but tonight, mostly I just wanted to mention two quick things. One, my hero, Councilmember Vega, who picked up 500 newsletters, which she is delivering, or maybe already has, to her constituents as she goes around and visits her communities. So, really, thank you so very much. And then, lastly, I wanted to mention, well, actually, two things, sorry. One is, this month, we are starting our U.S. Citizenship Classes at the Branch, and I'm really proud that as an institution, we are moving forward and providing this for our community. I think it's a great program, and it's well-needed. And I am continuing my community conversations out in the community. So, tomorrow night, I'll be at the 1881 Club from 7:00 to 8:00, and then I'll probably zoom on over to the Ale House, 8:00 to 9:00. And, because I know that beautiful Altadena is having, like, an informal meeting there. So, I'll hop on over there. And Saturday morning, I'll be at Cafe La Leche. So, we'd love to hear from people in the community, if you'd like to talk about your aspirations for Altadena or the library specifically. And that's really all I have for tonight.
Well, that's a lot. So, Councilmember Vega, okay, go ahead.
The shredding event, are you going to have onsite shredding?
Mike, Mike?
Yes, this Saturday, onsite shredding event, yes.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
And moving on to the next community report, that will be Chamber of Commerce, Councilmember Malone.
Hi. Well, first of all, I'll let you know that there was a slate for this year's Executive Board, and so, there's a new president for the Chamber of Commerce. The slate was voted in. The president is Doug Cauliflow. The vice president is Kelly Bennett. The secretary is Rebecca Trafukian, and the treasurer is Craig Snell.
Oh, okay.
Okay. So, there was also two. They will be hosting the Citizen and Business of the Year. That was announced in the media. The Citizen of the Year is hosted by the chamber, but it's not really a chamber event, because it's from all the community nominees, and then the members, organizations of Kona, of ACAB, that will vote. This year was the highest number of nominations received in years.
That's good.
So, it was a huge participation from the community.
That's great.
And I would say that there were several names on the, on there that I wished I could have voted for several. I didn't take part in the voting process, because as representing the president of the chamber, it's kind of a conflict of interest. So, the, I will tell you, is out there publicly, which is Ben McGinty is Citizen of the Year, and Business of the Year is Ottega Graphics, Hugo Ottega, who, most of the signage you see for the stores, everything from Park Bench Deli to Two Dragons Studios to personal things, is all his designs. So, those were the two winners. I also would like to say congratulations on the seven others who were nominated, which was amazing. I'm not sure if I can make them public, but it was seven. There was seven total.
That's really good.
Yeah, it was, and more than one got more than, more than one nomination from people. So, it wasn't like it was just one person nominated. So, there were people that nominated by several people.
That's right.
Right? There was one person that nominated, nominated a whole organization, and two people nominated that person. So, so, it was, it was, it was, it was very, okay. The dinner is at the County Club on February 9th, Friday, February 9th. It's always the first Friday of February. Typically, it has been recently. That's when the swearing-in of the new officers will have, take place. After that, I'll probably continue to do the report while I'm here, but it won't be as president. The, please consider coming and supporting. It is, the tickets are $85, but it is a, it's a break-even for everything, because there's a lot of, you know, the ticket to always come, and so forth and so on, and the winners are comped. So, it's, please come and support if you can. It starts at 6:30, 6:00 or 6:30?
You invite them in your-
In your mailbox. Yeah, so go to the mailbox if you invite them. The other thing that came up, and I would like to point out, is that, just hot off the presses, everybody has one. It's the, it's the first business directory that's appeared in Altadena in 13 years.
Woo!
A lot of hard work went into this. There are some things, you know, there was a lot of going back and forth. It is a directory that includes everybody, whether they're a member of the chamber or not. The whole idea is to include the whole business community, and by being inclusive, maybe more people are interested in participating and supporting the chamber. However, like Altadena, we're a volunteer base, so it's hard to get those businesses you don't know of, and home-based businesses, or small businesses. So, it's a start. At the bottom of each page, you'll notice there's a disclaimer that says, "For corrections or additions, and additional inclusions in future directories, this is intended to come every year from now on, please email your information to a directory email." So, if you have a business, you know someone with a business, you are included, you have to put it in for the next printing. So, there is the information right there. They're outside on the table there. And then, for those questions everybody asks, is what did the chamber do? On the very back page, there's, there's a bullet points. There's also a membership form if you'd like to help out. It's, the chamber only exists by volunteer and funding from membership dues. It gets no support from anywhere else.
Who can join?
Anyone. You can join as an individual. And then, if you go to the second-to-last page, it tells you what kind of memberships you can have. Councilmember Knapp has joined as a, as an individual. On the very back page, a lot of questions people say is what did the chamber do locally? And this is a list of some of the things that's happened this year. I'll just read you this quick page quickly. Um, I'll just read you this quick page quickly. The Altadena Chamber of Commerce steadily grows year over year. This month, we had five new members. It doesn't sound like a blot, but it's continuously, month over month, we're getting continuous growth, which is, which is, it's, it's awesome. Here are some of the activities and accomplishments just from the past year. We host Business and Citizen of the Year, Officer Installation and Award Dinner. We awarded four one thousand scholarships to Altadena graduates, um, especially the children that, that will need it. We do Power Breakfast Series, guest speakers and networking. This year we had Catherine Bagger herself came as a guest speaker. Uh, the next one will be in February. I don't have a, I'm not sure the date yet. February, I think we're con- confirming, I think it might be February the twenty-third. Uh, Congresswoman Judy Chu has agreed to come and speak for the next Power Breakfast. We'll be hosting that. The New Business Mixer Series, we started just before the holidays. Um, Active Advocates for Responsible New Business Development, where we supported the, uh, parking arrangements for Mariposa and other things like that. We've gotten behind and wrote letters with county supporting commercial, uh, support, strong commercial is a strong community. Uh, we modernized our newsletter with a focus on member news, events and featured businesses. If you're not on our newsletter, um, we have a Constant Contact Newsletter that goes out once a month. It features all the events that are going around town, especially with members. One thing we do with the members is we don't allow people to take out ads in that newsletter because the whole thing is supposed to be equitable for all members. Then it doesn't become about, um, who can afford the most and the favoritism. It's, it's equal. If you have an event, you can go in there. So it goes out, and the open rate on that Constant Contact is around twenty-three percent, which is amazing. Uh, we co-sponsored the Family Holiday Movies in the Park twice this year in Loma Alta Park. Uh, the first ever Business Walk was Senator Pontotino we partnered with. Ribbon Cartons and Media Promotions for New Businesses. We supported and sponsored the new local Triangle Park. We co-sponsored the North Lake Pole Event for the holidays. And we also, for the first time, we, uh, sponsored and paid for the carolers that performed at the Christmas Tree Lane Lighting Ceremony. So that was just this year. So next year we hope to do more. And, uh, I'd like to say thank you to Dr. Thomas too, who's also on the board for such a wonderful year. So thank you. Let's, so take these home, share one, pick one up. Got more information, if you want an ad in the, in the next one, then you have to join. Otherwise you can get a listing.
Thank you so much. Uh, moving on, Collaborate Pasadena, uh, Councilmember Sanjika.
Okay, um, on December fourth, Collaborate Pasadena hosted a festive gathering to celebrate the twenty-seventeen accomplishments of, uh, organizations and agencies throughout the city, particularly focusing on efforts where collaboration played a role. Representatives from more than twenty-five organizations attended the event. Participants were asked to post things that went really well during the year, particularly those involving collaboration. The Collaborate Pasadena will be hosting a series of community listening sessions every other month with the goal of hearing from small groups of community members about what concerns them most and then to explore together ideas and solutions. The dates and details will come. On February the fifth, uh, a community forum hosted by Collaborate Pasadena Supportive Communities Work Group and Akona, that's the Altadena Coalition of Neighborhood Associations, will take place at the Flint Ridge Center on, uh, at the Flint Ridge Centers from six PM until seven fifteen. Uh, and that activity will take place in Suite One Seventeen. Please RSVP, Elizabeth at C O L L P A S dot org by February the first, if you're interested in attending that. The forum is an effort to hear about strategies to ensure neighborhood inclusion, increase participation in neighborhood activities and link to other neighborhood associations and groups around the community. That concludes my report.
Thank you so much. Any questions for Councilmember Sanjika? Once again, thank you. Moving on to, uh, LA County Parks, uh, Department of Parks and Rec. Okay, not here. Finally, the Altadena Homeless Count, uh, Councilmember Matthews.
Okay, for those of you that are still here, just a friendly reminder of the twenty-eighteen Altadena Homeless Count, Tuesday, January twenty-third, twenty-eighteen, eight to eleven PM. Loma Alta Park is the, uh, deployment site. A special thank you to the community volunteers and sponsors to ensure Altadena's count included, is included in the data gathered to assess how and where homeless persons can be served. The count is the first step to helping homeless persons find permanent housing. If you have not signed up, it is not too late. Please sign up by visiting W W W dot theycountwillu dot R. And also thank you to council members that have signed up. If you haven't, I'm looking at all of you now. I'm sure at least one person from each census tract should be able to sign up. If you cannot actually do the count, you can volunteer to help out in the, uh, deployment site. Doug Cauliflower has volunteered and he's helping out with those of us that are on, that's on the team. I call it a team. It's myself, Dorothy Wong, uh, Anne Langseng and Pamela Burton, which is a community person. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. Any questions for Councilmember Matthews on Homeless Count? All right, uh, I did promise one thing. Uh, I, I don't have all the information as to the channels that this, um, recording is, uh, broadcasted. But I believe one is on Charter, is, uh, channel thirty-two. And on AT&amp;T, we, we think it's ninety-nine. But again, uh, uh, at the next, uh, meeting, I will make sure I have all that so that you can, uh, take a look at it. I will also give you the times that they air and any repeats thereof. All right, I think, uh, that, yeah, it's done already. The census tract is done. That was it. Oh, you did? Okay, uh, Census Track Forty-Six Ten.
Okay, I just want to say, first of all, thank you, Dr. Thomas, for all your help with, uh, um, issue. But thank you, I have some happy stuff. Census Track Forty-Six Ten had a scavenger hunt and it was brought to my attention by a student of Odyssey School. She wanted to do a project on trash in Altadena. So what we did was, we asked residents and businesses to pick up just eight items of different kind of trash and put it on social media. So you would pick up a soda can, plastic or something else. And so the, the whole community kind of got together and just did it at their own leisure and took pictures and put it on social media. So that was fun. And also the ninety-nine cent store that burned is now being gutted and redone on Fair Oaks and Woodbury. So that's good. I'm not sure what it's going to be. I saw them. But they, they were doing it. And there's a new business, we're getting healthier in Altadena. Earth Tone Natural Kitchen and Juice Bar will be opening next to the Subway and the Twenty-four Hour Fitness. And they did say they would join the Chamber. So, um, I'm not sure when, it should be soon. I talked to them in December. I will give them one of those. I have their email, everything. So, but thank you and thank you for staying and thank, thank you to the council.
Okay, um... I didn't even ask, uh, a motion?
To adjourn this lovely meeting?
Okay, is there a second? All right, uh, all right, the meeting is adjourned. I think this is the first time we've done it this, this long and it is for a good cause. In a while, in a line, in a while, so, uh, it's ten fourteen.